...of business is continuation of the public hearing for site plan review, special permit, and stormwater management permit for the proposed construction of a 4,500 square foot building with associated site improvements at 111 Shrewsbury Street. And the first order of business should be the green cards.
All right.
Green cards, Mrs. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you very much. So I'll hand it over to you.
So my name is Brian Marchetti with Conscity Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of Farming of Mass, back from Conscity Engineering's here, Bob Fuller, we have, is here, and Curtis Bias with our traffic consultant, Green International is also here. So we were here about a month or so ago, we had submitted site permits for the permitting of the recreational marijuana facility at 111 and 113 Shrewsbury Street. And we didn't properly notice the factors, so the meeting was continued. We noted the factors again, we have all our green cards here today. And at the previous hearing, we had already gone through one round of comments with VHP. VHP did submit a subsequent response, or comment letter based on revised plans. We have the opportunity to revise those plans, and these are ones that we are here tonight to present to everybody. Pretty much everything has been addressed. There was a couple of outside comments, we have stacked comment letters here today that we must submit and pass out to everybody and go through, but a few comments that will remain on the site plan. So if you'd like, I don't know if you want to go through the kind of layout and development plan.
I agree, we need to do a summary for those who work here.
So...
What's that?
Turn it a little bit so they can see.
We should, yeah.
So for those of you who know the site, here, colored in green, here's the property, corner of Hartwell, Shrewsbury Street, addresses are 111 and 113. The two parcels combined meet the metal acre requirement for a lot in the zone. Currently, the zone is divided between business and industrial district. The majority of the site is within the business district. And the proposed use for recreational marijuana facility is allowed by rights in this zone. Well, allowed by rights with special permit. What we're proposing here is a 4,500 square foot building. This site here will be accessed from Shrewsbury Street and Hartwell Street. We had previously permitted on the abiding properties here, a 16,000 plus thousand square foot building on this property here, another building back here which will house Bob Fuller's current business, which is a chassis business. So these two sites have already been permitted. The building back here is already being constructed. The proposed access was already permitted and approved through the same curb cut and driveway to get to this facility. So to access this lot here, we're not proposing additional curb cut on Shrewsbury or Hartwell. The same curb cut will be used to access the recreational marijuana facility. So as I said, a 4,500 square foot building. We're proposing the shaded pavement that you see here to house the parking facilities, loading facilities. We've got also proposed landscaping improvements around the building and parking areas and then the associated utilities and stormwater improvements that are being installed, commediating increasing privacy area as resulting from the development.
If I may interrupt, is there not a curb cut on Hartwell for exit?
There is. So we have one here on Shrewsbury Street and the one here on Hartwell. Both of those curb cuts were permitted as part of the previous developments.
Okay.
So as part of this development, I was just going to flip through this plan show, we're proposing, which was a request from Public Safety in Town, Police Department, the, this is a track queuing plan, so the property will still be accessed from Shrewsbury and Hartwell Street. And Shrewsbury Street can be accessed from both of these curb cuts. This is currently the curb cut of the baseball facility. This is the curb cut that was proposed and approved for the two developments that we already have permitted. And then the curb cut over here on Hartwell Street is also going to be used for access in the area. But one of the requests from police was that we use the access drives on Hartwell, or Shrewsbury Street for access only. So all exiting from the marijuana facility will be done through Hartwell Street. And that'll be addressed through assigned event sites where people leaving the facility will have sign for exit to Hartwell Street in direction of coming in that direction. So what we're showing here is a parking lot, 90 or so parking spaces that is meant to be a temporary condition if the parking is needed for the proposed recreational facility. Right now, this entire parking footprint has been approved for a 16,800 square foot building that's also owned by the applicant. So the intent here is to have this project permanently approved, build out the recreational marijuana facility, and we'll have this available parking. There's a lot of concern based on the Lester marijuana facility's approval, that there wasn't any parking available, it created some serious congestion in town. Having this area available, which is more than any of the other facilities, I guess in the state, has available on the same property, will be able to absorb the need for parking in the area. You know, and once it's found that, you know, if it's found, it may, may not happen, if this parking is not required, then the applicant can move forward with the other building program. So for now, this is the plan, is to build up the building, build up the partnering facilities that are here, have this parking available to use, and sometime in the future after, I'm sure, I don't know how exactly it's going to work with the town, once it's decided that this is needed, the applicant will be able to move forward with this other development plan.
What's that process to establish when it's needed and when it's not needed? Is there something written somewhere that says it's police chiefs or what?
If I could, if I could even access Conscity Engineering, would you like to chime in on that? So back when we first had our roundtable meeting and then the community outreach meeting, that was right about the time that Cultivate was opening in Lester and everything was on the news. And if you Google it back in late November, early December of last year was when all the rigmarole was going on about that traffic issue. So we said, well, we have that extra land available, let's put the 16,000 square foot building on hold, so we have the overflow parking. And then, you know, we discussed, nothing's been formalized, that both the police chief and the board would be able to say, okay, yeah, we've observed the activities in the site and we agree that the overflow parking is no longer needed. So I guess that would have to be a condition of the special permit that, you know...
This would be in place until?
This will be in place until such time that I guess, I think the smartest thing would be for us to put a request in to the board that you would refer to the police chief, and then you could take action on it.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I've seen other communities actually just put a condition that the applicant shall return to the board 45, 60, 90, whatever term the board feels is appropriate, basically. And the applicant could even suggest something as a timeframe. Make a presentation on how it's going, provide some data if necessary, then you guys can say, all right, we agree that parking is either still needed, for another six months, please return, or it's not needed now, you can remove that. That's what I would suggest, so that it kind of takes the guesswork out of it and puts something, probably in a decision, and just tell them a timeframe to come back.
So not a recurring time, but rather is...
Yeah.
This is approved, have, say, 90 days, and then at that point...
Right, and say, come back, let's see what it is.
Six months or eight months or whatever.
Decide at that time.
I think that's an excellent idea. That way we know what to expect.
Sure.
And you guys, you know what to expect and realize what it is at that time.
Was 90 days about when it settled in Lester and other places it opened, or is that a good amount of time?
I actually got here early, so I spent 20 minutes in my truck Googling Cultivate Lester traffic problems. I Googled the one in Northampton, I Googled dispensary near me, and went on Facebook. And from what I could tell is, everything really went from about November 20th to about December 18th, is when you had news story, news story, news story, and then it just went, and there was nothing. And then even somebody today on Cultivate's, or a week ago on Cultivate's Facebook page said, are you guys still happy? And a couple of people said, no, I was there today, it was fine. No, I was there last week. Cultivate's in here with shuttle service if you need it. So it seems that it's really tapered off. It was that initial, we're the only one open in the state.
Right.
Yep.
So I think that...
90 days seems reasonable.
Yeah, I was actually going to say, two other communities that I've worked with actually pick 45 has a specific time. It actually benefits both parties, so that if there's, by the time you guys are done, if you put some other condition on the applicant that may be too stringent, like appointments or something else that you guys deem as necessary, they can come back in 45 days and request relief from that. And if there's traffic issues, you don't have to wait till 90 days, you can ask, they'll come in sooner, and you can resolve the issues. And again, it's just something to consider, but that's, I, two other places chose 45 over 60 or 90.
And then Rob was saying that Hudson required traffic detail on part of their permit, and that only lasted two days before that.
They have no onsite parking, right?
Correct.
There's remote parking.
Yeah.
Isn't there a new one in Marlborough that's open?
Yeah, Darren Murphy's, we do their permitting.
This week?
For, it opened Sunday, this past week.
They open Sunday.
So we talked at the last public hearing about having some ideas for if things go south, go bad, as opposed to going well. You were going to come up with some options that could be implemented? I didn't see anything on that. Didn't we talk about that? Like the shuttling, provide shuttling if there's problems with the parking, provide a detail if that's needed, if the traffic is decided to require it? So I thought we were going to have something as alternatives when...
Continuities.
I think you are, you meant to say that if the parking is not enough, you have 90 parking day, if you get more crowd...
147.
How much?
147.
147, if you get more than that, that's what he's discussing.
Your facility really can't handle 145 people at one time, I suspect.
It's 4,500 square feet, but don't forget that 1,500 square feet of that is break room, bathrooms, the ball, parking space. So the actual retail component is, you know, 2,500 square feet because you have the vestibule and you have the exit hallway, so...
So were there, to me, not many people show up, you would have a line out the door.
You'd have to have a line of people waiting outside.
Well, I think you retire appointments, maybe do whatever you can do to sort of even it out.
Was it, I'm just thinking, was it this one or was it the other? We had a preliminary meeting with them. I mean, I know someone talked about having alternatives, and if you guys don't remember ever doing that, it may have been with the other one that's coming up.
Our alternative was, let's put the big building on hold and provide all this additional parking. So maybe it was the other one, because I honestly don't...
I'd be shocked if there'd be a lack of parking with that, yes.
If I may, we did do a parking study for another site in Fall River, and, you know, we found that based on kind of the size of this project, the demand there was about 24, or the size of the demand for this, for this site would be about 24 spaces based on an existing open use in mass. So we felt that 92, there wouldn't be an issue for shuttling.
Okay, no, that makes sense. Good data.
And another thing that, when I'm proposing this plan, the applicant owns the property over here now.
Are you open on Saturdays and Sundays?
What are the hours?
I...
I'm sorry, I was just...
What, on that day, you know, I did notice last Saturday and Sunday, people are using for the baseballs.
Yeah, there was a tournament.
So there are a lot of parking. So how are we going to manage on Saturdays and Sundays? Because you will be getting, this is the only area you are for baseball too, right? Am I correct?
You, well, like you, like Brian said, we purchased the Pierce lot on the other side, which is basically the whole parking lot. And the thing that messes up, messes up right now, to be quite honest with you, is the machinery that's onsite. We can't utilize the entire parking area because the machines are taking up half of the parking area.
How much you can park?
I counted, there was 47 cars there this weekend for the tournament, which is a lot. So it's usually two teams there, two teams coming in and leaving. But we, in the last meeting, we agreed that we were going to paint lines, and I think that's a great thing, because I was watching this weekend and people coming in and parking the long way, taking up four spots, not knowing how to park because there's really no guidance. But we really can't do that to the machines, because they've got tracks and they're going to look up.
So the paving will be, whatever the paving right now, are you...
It'll be the building right now, but we're going to do the chalk lines and the paint lines, like you guys are.
Remember that part of discussion, we were concerned about sort of controlling that traffic.
Willy-nilly parking with no lines, not helpful.
It looks like a bunch of ants, because there's just, there's just cars going everywhere here.
Right now, from roughly this line over, is all gravel, where my machines are working on the LFR building, and then we have components of the metal building here siding and framing and that, so I'm taking up probably half of that right now between my equipment and materials for the LFR building.
When do you, when those two buildings will be done?
The LFR building, we're shooting for the end of July to be done.
But any, and before this opens?
Before this opening?
Oh, yeah, the intention is, Rob said to me 10 times, as soon as your machines are done here, we want to, assuming the board approves, we want you to walk them across the site and start over here. Which, I don't object to.
Can I touch on, just because we have everybody in the room? There was an amendment to the other project where you were going to, which involves the exit traffic, where you were going to move the parking lot so that it kind of didn't have a 90-degree access to the road.
This year?
Yeah, well, it's not really shown, but yeah, up there. There was the parking lot for the LFR building. You were sort of amending it to sort of bend it.
Yeah, see how it's right now, this is in light gray. So it's at an angle, and we just wanted to rotate it so it was parallel to this edge of the building. So Mr. Fuller owns a pretty elaborate trailer for pulling the race cars to and from, to shop to the racetrack. And so we'd like to be able to put that undercover eventually, so like a little lean-to off the end of the building, so that, I went to the building commissioner and asked him if we could twist this, but it doesn't impede anything, the driveway still stays the same, it just literally goes like this to create some room.
Yeah, I was just concerned about when the people are exiting there, they don't, now they don't come in at a 90-degree, they come in at an angle, and if they have the right light, you know, view of the traffic coming from the left.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it gets a little better because they're twisted.
And they're looking more at it?
They're looking more at it.
Okay.
Well, I'll hear, did you still have something?
You know, I was just wondering what days it's open and what are the hours of operation?
Right now, it's seven days a week, Sunday 12 to 5, Saturday 8 to 4, and Monday through Friday 8 to 5.
You have more to show, or?
Well, so I was going to just go over briefly the utilities.
So while Brian's looking through the page, just for reference, Cultivate's hours, seven days a week, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
People up there need more answers.
We looked at 10 to 6 as well, we're really not going to know, we're going to see what the traffic patterns look like, see what kind of things are coming in.
What were the Saturday and Sunday hours, I'm sorry?
Sunday was noon to 6. And Saturday was 8 to 5.
Marlborough's again, 10 to 8, six days a week, close on Sunday.
But that late?
Yeah, 10 to 8, Young's ending 8 to 10.
Those hours seem, actually seem pretty reasonable. We had a meeting last night that they approved 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., just a day a week.
Where is this?
I'd rather not say.
Okay.
But by our bylaw, despite some bylaw, unless there are otherwise specified in the conditions of a special permit, marijuana vehicles shall open to public no earlier than 8:00 a.m. or later than 10:00 p.m. No, I'm sorry, 8:00 p.m.
Eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
So it's usually a 10 to 8, depending on how, whatever the demand really is.
So they cannot open up to 8:00 p.m.?
So just wanted to really touch on the utilities out here. There's an existing electric service that we're coming off of, old, in Shrewsbury Street, that we're bringing to transformers and stubbing here in the parking lot for the two buildings that we've already permitted, so we're connecting to the same stub for this building. Water, we're feeding off the water main in Shrewsbury Street with the one-inch dramatic service. And we're tagging the sewer in Shrewsbury Street as well. All that's going to be in the building is bathrooms and probably kitchen, which is a great area, but it's a very small, small man. And then we're tagging the gas service in Hartwell Street. So it's small utility man, nothing to do with your area. And stormwater wise, soils onsite are really, really good, they're good steamed soils, so we're proposing like the other facility, the small intrusion basin underneath the parking area, and that will discharge to the same outfall east of the development as the other two buildings. So all in all, it's pretty minor. The lighting on the site is limited to wall pack lights in the building. We did have a revised photometric done. There was one area, the southeast corner of the building, that had less than a half-foot candle in one of the parking spots right off the sidewalk in front of the building. And it turned out to be an error in the model, so our photometrics kind of revised it, and we provided that as part of the revise. So that's, that's pretty much it, unless there's any other questions you guys have.
Anyone in the board have another question?
So last time when we talked about traffic, you guys had said that we were going to do, you were going to do some improvements to the general area to help for sightlines and stuff, and I think Benny had asked that, that that be shown on one of these plans? Do we do that?
So we spoke in the... I think it was addressed in a note from the layout plan that there'd be selective clearing within the right of way at the intersection. I don't know if that was added in the traffic analysis.
Yeah, we kind of also discussed possibly some advanced flooring signs, just for the Shrewsbury Street courses, in our letter.
Am I imagining, and I totally could be misremembering, but I thought that when we discussed this last time, we were going to look into it and see what was required, and a statement was made, and that, again, I could be totally misremembering, that this was part of what the community impact fee would be used for for improvements on the abiding ways, am I thinking of another place?
Sounds good, but I don't think that.
It does sound great, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if there was a clearing though, that would be on this plan, the layout and materials plan, and he had not added. But I think it was addressing the traffic analysis.
Yes, I was in it.
I would hope that there would be an easy condition you could add, that there'd be selective clearing within the right of way at the intersection. Right now, if you go out there, I know you've expressed concern in how fast people drive out there.
They do.
Pretty much these intersections within the right of way, there's not much vegetation in there at all. This site is completely clear.
Right.
Behind the guardrail over here, there is vegetation and brush, but it's set well behind the guardrail. So any clearing that I think would be done is on private parking off behind the right of way.
Yes.
But I think this is something that we could absolutely address, that we're all on board with clearing, whatever needs to be cleared.
I just, I think, because I know there's going to be more, I mean, it's, it's coming from the other side of Hartwell, right, that is, that it's so hard to see. And it's just because there will be more traffic there in general with all the stuff you have gone on in that corner that concerns me for those people trying to turn out there. Myself being one of them, frequently. So anyway, yeah, anything that we need to do to make sure that that happens, I think is good.
Right off Shrewsbury Street, they got cleared, I look in the mirrors on the other one.
Exactly, that's, that's what happens. You think that you're okay, and then it's, it's like, whoa, you, that was just a close call, and you didn't even know, you didn't even know it. So...
So that's at the Hartwell and Shrewsbury Street intersection?
Yeah, exactly. And it's coming from, it's not from the, you know, the dead end side, it's coming from the other direction, that side, that's so...
Where the pipe fitters and plumbers association is.
Wait, how much were those signs we put up for Genzyme?
A few, couple hundred pieces.
None of them, the ones with the solar, speed signs, couple grand.
Yeah, that's a couple, three, three pieces.
We do a lot of design work for Genzyme, and you'd be amazed how many really smart people that work there walk on their cellphone in front of traffic and get hit. And so...
Wouldn't surprise me at all.
Yeah, it's so bad that if you, you're not, you have to stand still now, it's a campus rule, you have to stand still if you're on your cellphone. If you get caught walking, you're written up.
One strike, you're off.
Wow.
So they had us, we put raised crosswalks, we put flashing lights, we put your speed signs, and it's still, so that's why I was asking, because they have, they have these solar power signs now that flash your speed. And you can get a smiley face if you're going slow, or they can get a little red mad face if you're going too fast. Those are, they're a pretty cost-effective solution to warn people on their speed.
So the building signs, is it any standalone sign, is it in the building?
It's wall mounted to the building, there's no standalone sign.
It's said, is it supposed to be street, or the Hartwell?
It would be at Shrewsbury Street.
It's on the building.
Yeah, to the building, yeah.
Yeah.
It's on that sort of chimney?
Yes.
Is it like a little sign or the...
Regular?
I don't think it's actually designed, the sign itself.
Well, obviously have to meet your bylaw.
But so...
In this package, separate from the...
But over this building, we do a department, we do a house, we do the driveway, we drive it yet.
Yeah, we, standard condition is say it has to go to the planning board and the building inspector.
Even on a wall mount, I thought that's when it was freestanding, when it was freestanding.
I thought it was any signs, because usually we have all the signs on the site plan review. As long as it meets the bylaw, it doesn't really matter too much.
We just do one for the storage, the house kind of built in, and I said I didn't need a permit for that, but the one that we put out by the street, we needed a permit.
Yeah, but that's true.
I think there's a condition.
You need to follow the state's, state bylaw. State law.
Oh, for the signage for the state?
Signage is required 935 C M R 500, 650.
In addition to ours, you're, you got that.
So VHP did some of the comments, I don't know if you want to go through?
One more question before that. My understanding, this is for only a retail state sale, and nothing is stored outside.
Nothing is disposed outside.
There is a dumpster proposed for regular household trash, but there's no, no.
In everybody's household, works it out. So I had a question on that 45-day meeting review, want to add in the idea of the intersection improvements, so we can talk about that at the time of that 45 days. Try to draft that as a condition that might be a little wordy, but we get that. And then the other is, I've just been finding as I'm driving down Route 12, I keep seeing all these deliveries to the sites that we said, we gave them site plan review, and they told us they're just using a box truck for deliveries for whatever they're getting. And I keep seeing these tractor trailer trucks backing in from Route 12 and blocking traffic. What's the plan for deliveries at this site?
So it would just be coming from, it would be coming from the grow facility in an unmarked van that would just come and back into a regular parking spot at this back door. So we're back into, you know, this spot or that spot, and be loaded out of the back of the van, right in this, on this hallway is where the, the storage vault would be. So we go right into, from there to the vault.
And so you're not going to be selling, I mean, the thing that I keep seeing is the big Coca-Cola truck that hauls it off to different sites, but it's a big vehicle. And I wasn't sure if you guys were going to have... And I wasn't sure if you guys were gonna have sales of that kind of stuff there, or it's just strictly that product?
But they're gonna be pulling into your site, there'll be no backing up on the street or whatever.
Well, no, yeah, so if I was in the delivery van and I was coming in here, I'd come in here, boom, and back into there, and then go.
Yep, that sounds, as long as that size is the, is all we get.
We've added that note to the, to the plan set.
And there's a whole separate licensing thing through the C C C to transport it.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions on the board?
Do, do we have any comments from other places in town? I didn't see any in my package.
Uh, from the departments? Yeah, that was listed on that.
I did leave John Fitch on site to go over electric like we talked about. So there's a poll just off the plan that we're gonna, he's gonna supply us with a junction box that will, two conduits out for the future seventeen thousand square foot building, two conduits out to add a fire, and two conduits over. So everything's set up right now.
Knows what that means?
Yeah. And he would say, this is what I want. So that all three buildings are fed off of one pole with a transformer. And then that's the next one.
Same thing, we did get a comment from the water department, just tell us how to handle the existing water service in the building. So we have that single utility plan.
So you, there's, it's combining three pumpings, so do you have?
Two, two. It's a house and a garage.
You're gonna cap on those services or something like that?
Yeah, do we have to, they get to do that private demolition permit, cut and cap water and sewer. That's all state demolition.
I know, I know, we are, we are not, you know, expecting a too much traffic. What if if there is a too much traffic? What is if there is congestion?
Congestion would be on their site, I mean. Well, if they've got how many hundred, how many cars?
Forty-seven, did you say?
But they come back to the board?
Yeah, then we.
So any, Raj, any of these facilities have to work very closely with the local police department. There's a detailed security plan prepared in accordance with the regulations you have before you that, as we discussed before, is in a public document, it gets submitted and worked out with the chief. And so there's, there's gonna be an open line of communication all the time between really any marijuana facility and the local police department. So if there is a traffic issue going on, we'll know right away, because we'll, we'll be in contact with that. And then, and then you'll know right away.
So that's, that's handled by the local police department?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're doing the planning for it. It seems like we have, right now, a, a good plan. We got, we have a good traffic flow. It's, we're gonna change, are the signs shown to get that one-way flow so that they're not exiting on Shrewsbury Street on these plans? Or are we getting a revised set for that?
So we just, we just have a logo signage on plan to drive traffic flow. So that's all it's gonna be, and we know, we didn't detail the signs, it's gonna be.
Obviously, I'm operating five businesses off that property, so the lesson, I want congestion to be offset. So it's a pretty unique situation, I have the home on site twenty-four seven.
So Wayne, we have everything set?
I think so. Brian, you wanna run through these, or you want me to, or what do you? Yeah, we, I have, I brought a stack of them, if anybody wants.
We got them.
We got them.
So Mr. Chairman, if I could just, for the, for the public record and for the audience, just for the record, we provided a comment letter on May third. County Engineering provided a response on the eighth. We had an additional comment letter on June tenth, and their final response letter today, June twelve. And there was a handful of items that we had some questions with in our June tenth letter. I've gone through this today, it looks like County Engineering has addressed all those. All that's trying to summarize what he's done. And there's a few recommended conditions that I would, that I would suggest as a reason for that.
So I guess looking at the June tenth letter, what he highlighted in yellow is what we responded to. Well, we found all of them, but the ones in yellow, the ones that are outstanding still to address. Some of them are very, or most of them are very minor, because we were just adding, you know, if you were planning change or something here or there. So I can briefly go through all of them, just to dot the As and cross the Ts. So conformance with the zoning bylaws, three, six, D, one, F. It varies at distant locations, so they were looking for an existing conditions plan from the surveyor. But I have to combine the revised plan set. We got that back in charge.
Is this the set that didn't have that sheet, or was that the other project? One didn't have sheet one.
I think there's, there's two sets of plans there, two different ones. In front of Paul.
No, hang on a minute.
Oh, you've got it?
You did, to me.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, that would be the ones that didn't have.
So the revised set that you sent us didn't have sheet one, existing conditions plan?
From, no, the Justin delivered on Friday, no, because we got it from Kevin Jarvis today.
Yeah, tell you, we have all electronic, so it'll be a drop box. So it's, we have, we got, literally, that's part of the revised set. The next yellow comment, dimension should be added to the plans, though the size of the proposed loading zone. So what we did since we don't have a loading zone for this use, was we added a note on the left interior plan. Pointing for the loading space is this proposed loading area, C note seven. So the intent is just to, as Patrick said, have the van in front of the, of private car in the back of the house. And we added a note saying proposed parking stall should be used for loading and loading outside of a business hour. Delivery vehicles will be comparable to standard work bins, adequate size to fit the standard parking stall.
How, how frequent do you have getting supplies?
How frequent are deliveries?
Maybe a once in a day?
Uh, no, probably once every two weeks, depending on, depending on sales.
How much?
The average would be once every two weeks.
The next comment is three, six, D, one, T. Applicant should include the size of the gas line in the plan. The gas line was shown in size on the utility plan. So just right here, it's four inch gas line. There's not any issues, it's kind of hidden there. Showing on the side.
No, that's not right.
Four inch?
Four inch gas line? Oh, the existing gas line, yeah. Not a service.
No, the existing gas line.
Like, if you're bringing it to Florida in service, I don't know what's going on in there.
No, no, no.
It's very warm.
So three, six, E, one, R. Some areas show more, half foot candles spilling on neighboring properties. Also some entrances that appeared on less than a half foot candle. So V H P's response was, although, there's a similar note in the previous submission, we were referring to above half a foot candle over property lines. That's not the case in the site. There was a few locations with less than a half foot candle, particularly at the southeast corner of the building. So that photometric plan under revised to show. I'm just saying here, they have, at the corner of the building over here, there was less than, I think it was point two foot candles, but it was right between, it was right between a point seven and a one point one. So there were high foot candles, then it went down to nothing. There was an error in the program. So he reran the model revised, so the updated photometric here is included, it's about half a foot candle. Signature block from planning board approval was missing from sheet five, six, and the architectural planes have been added. The next comment was site plan is above more than thirty parking spaces, shall provide interior landscaping. So our response was, we didn't provide the interior landscaping requirements for the temporary parking area because it's a temporary condition. The proposed build was gonna have a whole building there, so. So our response to that comment.
Basically, our position on that is if, if that temporary parking becomes more permanent, they just need to come back to the board and just discuss what kind of landscaping would be required.
Yeah, we, we agree with that condition.
None of us think that's gonna happen, but if it does, at least, and you probably should just add a condition.
Is there any lighting on temporary parking?
No, no.
And what, what determines permanent, what like the time?
It's probably the forty-five days.
Forty-five years, we'll know whether we need to keep it or.
Correct.
At that point, you get the course of the winter and dark hours, you know, we can discuss it.
Well, you close it like four, a couple of days, so the lighting might not be that bad of an issue.
So three, twelve, four. V H P recommends the applicant provide locus map demonstrating the locations outside of the zones. The zone speaking on the five hundred feet from the school, anything like that. So in our response was, this site was found to be in compliance with the setbacks as part of the community host agreement. So we didn't provide another plan showing that. We provided with the submission of the community host agreement, showing that it's in compliance with the setback.
Wayne, how do you feel about that?
Uh, it's, you know, I know there was discussion internally before I get involved. So as long as the board was comfortable with the location, we just recommended the graphic be provided for your records. But if it's already been agreed because it's outside those zones, then it's fine.
Was that kind of a map provided to anybody in the town?
So when you, so here, your town council actually came and looked at the site and determined it wasn't a public park. So I look back at Anita's emails, and that's all we really have. She didn't share the letter that your council sent, but obviously with the signed community host agreement, they wouldn't have gotten to that point if.
We're calling the map that we showed and, and Anita, there was sort of the zoning map showing the.
Anyone in the board of the board with no map, no locus map?
Well, it's gonna bring you a locus map, right?
We have locus map, we just don't show.
Re- assist the schools and.
Yeah, no, fine, we don't.
Okay.
Is that, it's not required somewhere?
Don't you think this, maybe we should get it on the town clerk?
Doesn't it say that we want?
We gave you Raj a copy of the community host agreement in the packet today.
Okay.
Plus a little card at least.
Did that have the map?
Over the map?
No, but if, that proceed, the map would proceed signing that agreement.
Yes. I'm, I'm a little bit more concerned about like the town's records. In the future, people say, well, where, what did that map look like? And then we can't find it, it was, we should just put one in this folder.
I know. My, my, I know that, you know, it's, it's been gone through the town council. And also the town council said this is public, is the park, determination on the park. There is a park, like all of that.
It is.
Field, right?
Field. So they said, you know, it's, it's all, they, the town council made some determination. That's, the letter is with the town admin service. So we need to get it for this planning.
Is it in the host agreement?
It's in, yeah, it was part of the step of getting the, the signed community.
If it's in the host agreement.
Seems, right, it seems like redundant.
I think what Raj was saying, we should have some documentation that, that's not a public park. So we just need something, so whatever.
I know that, you know, I know it's been gone through.
No, but I think it's our responsibility as far as the bylaws, is the planning board is supposed to verify that this has all been done. To request that letter and stick it in the file, I think is a.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
What happens if they don't have?
They deny it?
Well, if they don't have something like, some document, is there, you sure there is one?
There should be.
Okay.
So you, you could just add a condition, planning board is going to acquire the copy of the original host agreement that shows adequate location for subject project. If not, the applicant can agree to provide a figure, right? You guys can do that if you have it, right?
Oh, sorry.
So then, put that as a condition, and then you'll have something in your file eventually.
You know, that's one of the questions from the public, but this is a, there is a field. So how come field and the marijuana story?
Yeah. Private.
Yeah.
You'd be best to protect yourself by having something in the file, in case somebody asks.
And it's a town council determination that says it's not a public field?
Yeah, public.
All right?
Okay.
Where were we?
Moving on.
So three, twelve, five, A, one. Applicant shall include a copy of its registration as R and D from the Mass Department of the California. So. So these materials have all been submitted to the Campus Control Commission. They're the government, our government by these facilities. We have an email with the application number and filing that it's all under review. So all of this has been submitted to the C C C. It's all under review. So that email verifying that it's been submitted, we have tracked the number and all that, is part of this middle package.
Are we gonna get caught in the catch twenty-two in that we want the registration number, but you can't get that until?
That's when we say yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's gonna be a problem? I mean, you're, you're not gonna be able to finish your C C C track track.
We can't finish until we.
We can't go any further without this.
Right, so we're not actually gonna get there, I guess it's a condition?
Yeah, it has to be.
Thirty.
Otherwise, you can't get there from here.
Yeah.
It's a condition, look.
They have to submit a license.
License, yeah.
That they can't get without a virtual permit.
The registration as an R and D.
What page is that on?
It's the three point, twelve point, five point, A, one.
A one?
A one?
A one.
It's up to the page four?
Page four.
All right. Top of page four. And then we'll get that submitted, what's the timeframe? You submit that before you get building permit? Does that seem like a good condition?
Just move that back to you.
No, because it, like, if you, if you driven down one forty-six, you'll, you'd probably notice that the Nature's Remedy building was a hundred percent complete with a banner covering its sign. Because they built their facility and they were waiting for their final license to be issued, which is.
So I could do.
Unfortunately, a typical situation.
From, from the state.
Before opening.
Can I do it from C O?
Yeah, yeah, C O definitely. It's not uncommon to have these facilities built and then hurry up and wait for the final approval from C C C.
So that comment is three, twelve, five, A, four, D. Applicant shall, people details on loading, so we just discussed that. Three, twelve, five, A, five. Applicant shall provide a description of security measures. The security plan was submitted to the plant, to the board as part of the application filing back in April. Security plan is, again, part of this submission we have posted today, so all those comments will remind you of another copy. Three, twelve, five, A, six. Applicant shall provide the emergency procedures approved by D P H P R and D. So same thing, that was all part of the submission to the C C C. So all those materials were submitted to them under review, and we'll provide.
So that would probably be another condition to provide once approved by C C C.
No, meaning change for us.
Same page, Paul.
Yes, M E I, oh, no. Campus Control, so emergency procedures.
Three, twelve, five, A, eight. Applicant shall provide a copy of the policies and procedures for the transfer, acquisition, and sale. It's the same, same response. It's all submitted prior to that for the Campus Control Commission.
So there's a bunch of documents we'll be waiting for.
If we need to revisit our, our procedure or whatever, if, if in fact, they, we're asking for a bunch of things that they can't get until after we're.
Giving them permit?
And just to revisit our, how we hope to.
Our site plan review, yeah. Yeah?
It is getting better.
This was.
They, they have, you know, the process a lot quicker, so it is getting better on that, but there's some things.
For page six, first comment is in stormwater. V H P's conference test bits show that the high groundwater is three feet below the infiltration system as stated in the Mass E P Storm and Handbook. The amount of analysis should be provided, that was done and provided as part of this revised submission. General engineering plan comments. Applicant should add a note to show the limits on the layout materials plan, showing the area of regrange for the temporary parking lot, as well as adding dimensions to the temporary parking stall sizes. All that information has been added to the layout materials plan. We have added a, you know, a different hatch over here showing the regrange with notes on it defining what is, with the dimensions of the parking stall. So that's all in the plan. Number seven. As with respect to dead end parking aisles. V H P states, they, they defer to the police, since the police department was around who. Comment seems to be addressed. So the applicant should provide internal figures, that was number eight, for the trash.
And it talks about a, a long backup?
Yeah, that, that should be a condition you have, that if. Yeah, that, that should be a condition you have, that it's done off hours, trash pickup is done off hours.
Yeah, but not early mornings and, cause that's the biggest question or biggest call I get from a butters is when the trash truck is picking up and it's six o'clock in the morning.
So we would agree to a condition for that.
It's a, it's a relatively easy maneuver, the trash truck's backing up straight so that.
Cause they wanna be in a.
Yeah, it's a straight job at the end of the driveway. Back straight.
We're not, you're the generator. Not like a day, not daily or twice a day type of use.
Number eleven, the applicant should show a curb ramp at the south end of the sidewalk where it connects to the temporary parking lot. So we just show that the detail of the range from here of the grades along that sidewalk. And, uh, on the last page, uh, conservation commi- commission, applicant is often before the commission. Uh, this was a response, this was a, a question from conservation. We provided a figure here in our packet. As well as a letter from, there we go. Echo Tech, our environmental consultant. Let's see here, you see our proposed development is down here, our property line is up here. The red is the hundred foot buffer zone, so heading inside the hundred foot is within conservation jurisdiction or well inside the conservation jurisdiction. So we have a letter from our wetland salt man figure that's been provided, showing that conservation property is not required. And then, uh, the last comment was the applicant should strike proposed temporary parking lot or propose some other means to delay it. And we agreed last meeting, we'll, we'll strike that lot. And that was it. So all the comments seem to be addressed. We did receive one comment and email today regarding the traffic, live traffic analysis that was provided. VHP provided comments, our traffic consultant provided response to the comments. And there was one, one question came back today that they seemed to think, VHP thought there was an inconsistency between the traffic analysis and our plans. And that was with respect to the traffic queue plan. Still showing. Or the development plan overall here, still showing two-way, a two-way access to both of these locations. So, as I said in the beginning of the meeting, both of these entrances are permitted as part of other developments as two-way. The traffic queue plan, you know, we understand the police wants exiting onto Hartlock Street, so that's gonna be addressed with signage. We're not gonna build this as a, a neck down, narrow twelve or sixteen foot entrance. Because this building will be in operation while this is in operation, which, you know, this is the proposed access to that building. This will also be a proposed access for this building, so, you know, this will remain, you know, have the ability, it's gonna be a twenty-four foot wide curb. But, you know, there will be two-way access available here to use for, uh, sight and road to vehicles. But there'll be signage on sight directing, I guess, into Hartlock Street. So, um, that's where the inconsistency was. These were previously permitted, this is how it's gonna be built, this is how it's gonna operate. Directing the people who use the R and D will be done with traffic and with the signage and shrubbing and stuff like that.
So there's an entrance at the end of the other one also?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is two-way, this is two-way and the one on Hartlock's two-way.
Yeah, this one exists. This, just at the very edge of the page is the old Shell building.
So both of those are gonna be available for entrance to the property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we get a sketch of your sign layout, like what the signs are gonna say? We don't need the MTCD stuff. We just wanna get the, there's gonna be a sign here that says left turn only or just something to, to have us check things out to make sure they work.
Yes.
I actually was gonna ask the same thing. Did you, was something provided to the police or was it just taught?
It was taught during the roundtable. We actually got a second drive. This came right out. At the concept plan we presented at the roundtable and both chose, said, no, we don't like that. Can you do this and redirect everybody to the driveway that you're already building? And that's, that's how this all started.
So if there was no graphic, I agree with maybe that you should provide some for the board record so that if there's a question, they can just default to that as operational.
Paving markings with arrows? Is that the appropriate?
No, you need signs.
Just signs?
Well, it could be paving markings too, but it definitely needs.
Not in replace, not instead of signs, yeah.
Select the top of the tops.
Yes.
Great.
Do you need anything, are they, are the properties always gonna be separate or are they gonna eventually come together?
Oh, they'll always be separate.
So do you, um, as part of this plan, do we need something on there with the agreements with the other, whatever, other owners or easements or whatever? So that if you sold this off, all this shared driveway access is guaranteed to whatever you wanna do.
I, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, is, um, starting with the sacred secure facility, we had Jarvis go out and ad-built all those buildings. Ad-built the baseball field and so we were working our way across with the ad-built. Now that we have the design finalized, Jarvis is gonna do an updated A and R plan. Cause I think Rob explained, you know, he gets like fourteen tax bills. So Jarvis is going, uh, making a clean A and R plan with the. That we'll be bringing back to you now that we've got all the design squared away.
So that'll show easements for access to driveway.
Yeah, you know, they show driveway as well because like this infiltration basin ties into the manhole that my guys installed yesterday.
And it's all shared.
I know, but so, yeah, we need to.
And everybody's coming to that A and R meeting, right? Because it's gonna reference eight plans and four and six A and R drawings. Just to make sure that one goes well.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be a typical A and R, front of the area stamp. It'll be an explanation.
It'll be a long one.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public about this plan? Dave?
Not that it's important right now, but somewhere down the line, where is the snow storage?
So all this area here in between the driveways is all lawn area and landscape area. So, you know, typical plow away from the building, plow away from the building. Same thing here on the roadway, plow it, plow, plow it off the edge and stand practice.
And where is the, the dumpster gonna be? Is it gonna be enclosed?
Right here. And yes, it is. Six foot wide ground, stocky, and it's enclosed.
What is the, what, if, if Mr. Fuller is able to build on that adjacent property, what would be the smallest or biggest building that he could be built if he needed, you know, some of that parking for the retail?
So the, the one that's approved is sixteen thousand eight hundred footprint, single story.
That's the biggest.
Yeah.
So he could, you could downsize that if you need to, if you need to do more.
Yeah, that's kinda what I bought the Pierce lot for, just a giant parking lot.
Uh, cause I know that, you know, there's, you know, we're not sure how much of that parking is gonna be. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, he's gonna be able to, you know, if he needed to give up some of that parking for the retail store, is he still gonna be able to, you know, develop, you know, build whatever he needs to build and still have enough parking to accommodate that specific building?
So there'd be thirty-five spaces. If the temporary parking went away, there'd be thirty-five spaces between these ten, five, six, six and seven. So there'd be thirty-five spaces just for the dispensary, which is ten more than the traffic engineer is telling us that we need.
And how many employees will be on station at any given time?
Two to six.
Two to six. So you'd have to, you'd have to subtract two to six parking spots from that thirty-five, correct?
Sort of, well, I mean, we did a study of an existing site, so I assume that the employees were parked there as well and included in that.
Right, the number is based on an existing dispensary that's open.
What, that even, so that includes the employees?
And then the other far parking as well. There'd be two employees in there and I think there's sixteen parking spaces.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, if you, if you had to use some of the additional parking from the other space, that you were gonna be able to, you know, still build a building. I know that you approved the sixteen thousand square feet, that's the biggest you could build. But I just wanna make sure that you're able to build something, providing that, you know, you don't have to use all the parking.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay, just to follow along then, this building over here, what was the intent and does it have any of its own parking further away?
It does, it has parking on the other side on this driveway. So there's, there were spaces facing it all along here that were opposite of the spaces that face the Shell building.
What sort of uses it? Is it an intense parking use?
When we did it, it was a contractor base, so basically.
Oh, it'd be another, they'd work on those?
Yeah.
Yeah, like the front of the Burris building.
Nothing that services the public.
Right, so there, there wouldn't be a reason to be concerned that they need a thousand parking spaces?
Why, why, is the, is the baseball field using this parking lot too?
They use the storage facility and that parking spot, yes.
Okay, so, and it's only the, the volume of vehicles, it's only during, it's a season thing?
Baseball season.
Okay, so anytime after September, October, then it's gonna be wide open. So basically it would be like May to, May to September, May, August, so, okay, so that would be your, the only, my only concern would be is, is that, you know, if you were able to build another building, how would that?
Again, they would have to the Pierce lot. So, yeah, we're gonna have signs, baseball parking around the corner or whatever we have to do. That was the whole point of spending the money to get on the additional parking.
Nice, cause I know, like I said, I know that you're using that now. I just wanna make sure that you're gonna have ample parking if you build a building there.
Did we do?
And you know, the tournament?
Oh, yeah.
Did we do a site plan review for that baseball building, the baseball training building and field in the background?
Yeah, that was shown on the, on the storage, self-storage.
I thought the self-storage was for self-storage and then the building itself, but I, it would probably be good to check the parking calculations for whether that building itself had, uh, adequate parking for both the baseball field use as well as the, the training, the baseball training building stuff. Cause I don't remember seeing a, um, a calculation for that. And he just reminded me of that.
You have a question?
Yeah, I know, that's.
When did they anticipate opening?
October.
Anything else? Wayne, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
So are we continuing?
Why, why would we?
I don't know, are we done?
Are you done?
Yes, please, Mike.
Are you done?
So we check close.
Do we know what we're supposed to do for?
I have a list of conditions, of seven or so conditions plus our typical ones.
I'll be glad to check those out with many of the public.
Yeah.
Mr. busy writing.
Good.
Great, okay. All right.
Yeah, okay, so I move to.
Do we wanna, not that I wanna continue, but we have an officially got comment from police on fire and.
Yes.
It's in the.
I just hear some comments.
Go review those.
Oh, just bring it to the minutes.
Fire approved, police approved.
What?
Was that the original meeting that we had? I didn't bring them, I didn't bring them this time, probably last time.
Yes. All right, we got it on the bottom of Wayne's or bottom of page nine on Wayne's. Fire department approved, police department approved, board of health approved, must be connected to the sewer. And that was the comments I got. And then the water did an email, right?
Yes.
About connections.
I heard a motion being made.
So, yes, I, I, I got to, I'm a, I move to close the public hearing, uh, for the site plan review for, uh, one eleven and one thirteen Shrewsbury Street.
And we're going with one eleven?
Oh, we're going to, yeah.
Not both of those, cause you only need one number on this, right?
You do, that's true. So one eleven, she was saying.
Question made?
Second.
All favor to close it over here?
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, so, next steps are draft these up?
Yes, I'm ready for our next meeting. I'll try to send it out to everyone to review and make comments.
Next meeting is, uh, twenty-six, is that correct?
Yes.
Twenty-six.
So we move to grant the special permit of the twenty-sixth, right, once you have.
Yeah, once we have the conditions, it, it all kind of is one package, we'll do that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Were there any?
Both special permits, right?
To clarify?
It's a spe- uh.
Special permit.
Special permit and a stormwater permit.
There's one more.
And, and the, whatever the, the cannabis one. The special permit that we grant for specifically for the, uh.
Right.
Whatever.
Oh, right, yep. It's in the form, it's in the application form, so just follow that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much. Go bros.
All right, all right.
They're leaving just in time.
Got stack of green cards.
Apparently the Sox walked off.
Wow.
Red Sox walked off the trailer.
How'd they do today?
I guess they wanted. They walked off.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. Not meaning they wanted to strike.
Just walked out of here.
Are we, are we making our meeting up now?
Look at that.
Quick hearing, right, right.
Oh, good.
Clerk. Read that, yeah.
Yeah, you wanna start it while he's sitting up?
Yeah, you, you read that first, though, right?
You have to open the public hearing and then you read the notice.
You read it after that we open it?
Yes.
We do.
I think you might need to do another year here.
Oh, yeah, I knew that was coming.
Maybe. Practice makes perfect.
So we'll open up, we're opening up a public hearing for, uh, two fifteen Shrewsbury Street and our clerk will read the specifics.
Uh, notice of here, uh, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held Wednesday, June twelfth, at eight o'clock, West Boylston Town Hall. Uh, first floor meeting room for a site plan review, special permit and stormwater management permit application as required in the zoning bylaws. Section three point six B, three and five, and section three two one three and four. Submitted by Thompson Liston Associates on behalf of Humboldt Masters LLC for a proposed change of use from manufacturing to a marijuana facility to construct greenhouses to allow marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing with no retail sales at two fifteen Shrewsbury Street, West Boylston. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting, at which time you'll be given an opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office. Hours Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, eight to four, Wednesday, nine to seven, and Friday, eight to two. Paul Anderson, Chair, West Boylston Planning Board, was in the Telegram and Gazette on May twenty-ninth and June fifth.
Do we have tear sheets?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
You have them all?
Big pile over there.
Excellent, thank you.
So the tear sheets and the certified receipts from the.
Excellent. I'll open the floor to you. You can introduce yourself then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Patrick Keeler of Thompson Liston Associates, representing Humboldt Masters LLC. With me is Albert Lockhart, the Principal of Humboldt Masters. So as you, as the clerk, right to the record, the proposal is for a special permit for marijuana use for pre-cultivation and processing with no retail sales on, on the site at two fifteen Shrewsbury Street. So this site at one time was a Nabisco, and then it became a New England envelope. At the current time, it's owned by the Daniels Land Trust, two fifteen, there are multiple tenants in, in the building across the street.
Can everybody, uh, see these, uh, drawings?
Patrick, can you just, can you turn the angle of that one so that, yeah, and the other one, that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
So the, the existing building there is about twenty-two thousand four hundred square feet. There are currently two indoor loading docks on the north side of the building, so parking lot on the south side. The front part of the building is used for office space, the back is warehouse and manufacturing. So the, the proposal is to add greenhouses onto the east side of the building. Approximately ten thousand five hundred fifty square feet of greenhouse. Originally, they had proposed a greenhouse in the roof that has been eliminated from the proposal. Originally, they had proposed a greenhouse on the roof, that has been eliminated from the proposal. So we're only looking at the greenhouse on the ground at the rear of the existing building. So, um... Uh, that greenhouse meets the zoning, the zoning side yard offsets and rear yard offsets, separated by ten feet from the existing building to meet the fire code requirements. There's a small indoor connection from the back corner of the building here into the greenhouse, so that can be accessed from inside the building, that going inside. So the greenhouses will have state-of-the-art ventilation and odor control systems, and we submitted to the board with, with the supplemental information, some information of the odor control system there, that has been used successfully in other parts of the country, and now in Massachusetts. So those are, uh, products installed on the ventilation system for the greenhouses. So we're also proposing a water connection to provide irrigation to the greenhouse separately from the loading service. Electric for the lighting in the greenhouse would be provided from the existing transformer on the south side of the building. Um, the heating system for the greenhouse has not been determined yet. Gas is available, we'll work with the gas company and the architect to design their connection with the greenhouse. Hasn't been determined currently. Uh, around the greenhouse, there's a, a space separated from the greenhouse, and then there's a security fence around the entire perimeter, from the back corner of this building, around the greenhouse to this corner, so it's fully closed. On the greenhouses and on the existing building will be mounted some exterior security lighting and cameras to have a full view of the perimeter. So we will add some lighting to the existing parking lot, or, or four light poles prepare, uh, proposed that would provide lighting on the parking lot for employees for security. As we said, there's no retail use of the facility, so strictly for employees. Uh, we're proposing to re-stript three of those spaces within the lot to create two accessible, wheelchair accessible spaces, and aisles in accordance with the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board. There's currently an entry entrance here to the office part of the building that will be used as the main entrance. Uh, we're proposing two additional, uh, fire egress doors, one at the back corner of the building here, one at the front of the building, those will come out onto impervious, um, blocks that connect to the existing greenhouse. So the trash enclosure is proposed here at the northeast corner of the building. There would be two dumpsters within a fenced area, the dumpsters would be covered and fully enclosed by the fence enclosure. There's also a security line proposed in that area, so that can be included in the cameras. As I said, there are two existing interior loading spaces here within the building. There are two roll-up doors we can secure, so the loading cannot be done within the building. It's one of the advantages of using this site is everything's done, you know, without outside of the view of the street.
Oh, the loading dock is inside the building?
Yes, this is loading dock inside.
Okay.
So, they would expect to have only vans servicing the site, delivering far goods and shipping out finished products. Approximately one incoming van per day and two delivery vans leaving the site. There may be some additional delivery vans from FedEx and UPS and whatnot. Those could just pull into the driveway completely off the store.
Can I ask one question? The trash, uh, two bins are there, how tall the fence and how secure the fence is going to be?
I'm proposing a six-foot solid wood fence, so it would be, it would be padlocked.
And as, as far as the, uh, security, uh, which requirements, is anything to be thrown out that is, you know, cannabis-related into those dumpsters, or is that more office refuse?
That's gonna be more office refuse.
Okay, and then, so packaging and so forth. Is the other, is the other, like the, the normal, like the plant and everything is just disposed of separately or re-compost it?
Yeah, we'll re-compost it and we can just ship it out in one of our vans.
And where, where do you re-compost, inside the building?
Yeah, there's a, um, if you can, brought me up one on the inside. It'll be in that green section inside the building. Uh, and then you can see like the little walkway from the greenhouse right by number seven, and then it comes into this cultivation, trimming, drying, clone area. Uh, from there, that's where we would be able to, uh, dismember the plants, uh, get the flowers off of it, mulch it, uh, get it ready for composting, and then you could just move it to the tractor trailer bay and, and move it off site from there.
At that stage, is it dry or it's still, uh, the plants?
What? Well, they'll be coming out of the greenhouse wet.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll be dried there, and then, uh, they will be trimmed and ready and basically packaged.
So the stems are dried at that stage?
The stems will also be dried, yes.
At that stage?
Yep.
So you will balow raise and then put it in the...
Yep.
So I'd like to get through all the site plan issues and then you have any particular questions. So the staffing for the greenhouse is expected to be minimal, and with a total of fifteen to twenty employees on site at, at production capacity. I think we start off with fewer employees and, you know, stage, stage the growth of the plants with the staff. Um, so the new impervious area is the greenhouse roof itself. We're proposing a system of two infiltration charges, one on each side of the building here. We've done some soil test pits out there, soil conditions are appropriate for that, and we've sized those to provide the appropriate offset to groundwater. Those have to be sited more than a particular distance from the potential vermicool, and the discharge point has to be outside of the regulated zone A. So we're really restricted in where on the site are we able to do the stormwater management, and it's a very tight site for that purpose. So we were fortunately able to get, you know, good soil conditions as a deep groundwater table that allows us to use that type of system.
A quick question about the existing stormwater management, is there any, how old is the building?
The building was built in the, um, late fifties and is currently no cathedrations, and so, uh, the roof gone off. Uh, there's some existing, um, roof drains, I'm not exactly sure of where they're discharged, we, we didn't find them there in particular, so they may go to a drywall, or they may be discharged in front of the store.
But you're not using their, there's not, no basin that they use that you're adding to, that, I mean, I'm nothing, I'm not using it.
No, we're just, we're just taking the new impervious area and treating and mitigating that appropriately through the infiltration system.
Okay.
So I would like to let, let the board know, we have been to the Conservation Commission, we filed a request of determination with confirmed the weapon boundary, and, um, they gave us a positive determination, meaning we have to come back to the commission with a notice of intent. Um, the commission would like to wait until we get through the planning or the site plan process before they take up the issue, to make sure that what's proposed is acceptable to the board.
How close is the wetland? I mean, that, that would only come up as an issue if the wetland is like a little distance away and they decide that the wetland is farther along.
Like I said, we confirmed the weapon boundary, they give us some guidelines for setback. Uh, the closest part of the building is twenty-four feet from the wetland in this location, twenty-five at this corner, the rest of it's further away from home. So the preference would be to have a twenty-five foot minimum, but we can't exactly do that with the, um, the modular sizes of the greenhouses, so that's as close as we could get. So we will be submitting a notice of intent, once we get through this review. I met with the police chief and building commissioner last week to go through their set of concerns. You've noticed on their, uh, comments, they recommended approval, but they have concerns. So we went through their list of concerns. Um, they're mainly concerned with, um, public safety and firefighting, as you might expect. So we need to provide them some, uh, more detailed information about the greenhouse, uh, construction materials, combustibility, uh, egress points into the greenhouse and things like that. Neither of them saw any, um, obstacles to approval, it's just a matter of going through the appropriate code compliance issues.
And you can give them what they need, so there's no issue, it should be all set.
Once it gets to that point, we should be able to do that. So when we apply for the building permit, we know exactly what they're expecting to see, you know, be included in the proposal. Uh, we had included a list of, uh, potential waivers with the application. There was a number of, uh, compliance issues, primarily to address the fact that this is an existing, we don't cite, parking lots existing, buildings existing, we can't remove those things. And we're asking to only deal with compliance for the, the new use, the new greenhouse, the trash, the parking lot lighting, and the things that are proposed or improvements. Uh, so there was a number of technical issues that won't be met through, I'm sure you'll, you'll be able to read them and see what we're talking about. Uh, we received a technical review from DHB, and I've been able to go through that list of, uh, technical review items. Before responding to those point by point, I would like the opportunity to move Mr. Meeple to hear his perspective, and then my perspective, of why certain parts of the code apply or don't apply. And then come back to the board, and continue here, to let you know just what's left to do as well. If that's acceptable. So I did have some supplemental information today to address a couple of those issues, particularly with the sighting of the facility, confirming that the facility meets the offsets to particular uses that are described in the zoning bylaw. The building inspector reviewed that and issued us a letter. Um, we have receipts from the submission to the Cannabis Control Commission showing that the applications for a license for cultivation and a license for production were submitted in April. And I'm providing an excerpt from the security plan, showing that the security plan will comply with the applicable regulations of the commission. I can't provide you the full security plan, because I feel it's proprietary and shouldn't be a public record. The police chief has had the opportunity to review that, and my understanding is he will be issuing a letter, you know, agreeing to it, or telling us what needs to change. And then, uh, one of the questions in the DHB review, uh, was the, the, the parking, the, the fence types. And my apologies, when I quoted that with my set of plans, the layer with those notes disappeared. It was on the original set, didn't show up on the revision, so I'm giving you copies of, uh, sheet C two, which includes those notes. So those reflect, um, the presence of the security cameras and lighting at the perimeter, the type of fencing that's proposed, the chain link lines at the perimeter, the solid wood fence around the trash enclosure. Um, and calls out the parking lot improvements here for the signage and striping for the two accessible spaces. So we're going to turn that in for the...
Okay, thank you.
So Robert, I must have missed something else that the board has, uh, mentioned about the...
I just had one quick question, the water district asked if there was a sprinkler building, is it sprinkled?
There seems to be a discrepancy between the right of the, um, records and what the architect found. So I'm looking into, uh, if, if there isn't a sprinkler system, from what we require in certain parts of the building.
It could be occupying the whole building?
The lease is for ninety percent of the building, so the landlord would retain, uh, this rectangle here for, for zoning use. That has some access to the exterior through a, a person door and a lower door.
Okay, that's not the loading dock area, though.
That's, uh, there, I believe there's a loading dock in there too, although it's not shown on, uh, because we're not occupying that space.
Okay.
So we would be occupying all but, um, sixteen hundred square feet. That is included in the parking spaces as part of the expansion warehouse use. So at the bottom of, uh, sheet C two here, we have a zoning compliance table, showing that we meet the requirements for frontage area setbacks, uh, open space, building height, and we provide calculations for the parking. So, uh, part of the building would be unoccupied and opening, but considering the full use of that building, the number of parking spaces required would be twenty-eight. The plan currently shows thirty-three. Um, we've been asked to move the trash enclosure up here, that may remain the space, and we may want to remove the space here to, um, allow access to the building, which we'll do. So maybe closer to thirty spaces provided on the outside. In, in any event, there's more than enough with twenty proposed maximum number of employees, twenty spaces for the intended use.
Uh, there was a A and R submitted to us, uh, at the last meeting. Is there an issue with the property that's changing, or is that an A and R to block in the zoning?
There are two issues. One was the proposed zoning amendment at the town meeting, so it was filed with the clerk prior to the meeting.
Right, I figured that that was before.
To prevent the zoning change from affecting this particular parcel. Uh, there's also an existing sewer septic system that's moved through the lot that that one removes, because it's not documentation to remove the easement. So that goes through where the greenhouse is proposed. So we want to have a clean property line plan showing there's no encumbrance that would prevent the construction of the greenhouse.
Do you want to ask for a re-submitment, then? Because I think, I think we turned it back with no, just because we didn't know what it was for, and there was no change to the property, so we really didn't have any, no knowledge of what was involved in it.
Were both of those things, uh, covered in the A and R?
Yeah, the A and R shows the property line perimeter.
Yeah.
And removes the easement.
I think...
It also makes a correction to the property line based on our survey, that's different from the nineteen ninety-one survey, was done by our firm.
Should we ask for a re-submitment? We, we didn't see a change to the property and there was no backstory, so we didn't have anything to go on to say this is what was happening. So what, what did they deny?
We denied it, right, because we didn't...
With our prejudice, so we could go back or something?
Yeah, so just resubmit the...
Yeah, so we went up to back.
Yeah, because we had no explanation of what was, was on the, on the plan.
I did check off the box saying there was no change to the property, that was one of the four options.
Right, I think that we, we read through the application, and then it just seemed like an A and R to not change the property line. We didn't understand the point of the A and R, you know, we didn't know what the sore line, so, okay.
Okay, well, the zoning amendment, as I, as I understand, failed to pass.
Right, so we figured that for that reason, it was sort of a null point. But if there is a valid reason to submit it and have a...
It still needs to be submitted, yes.
Okay.
I go for it.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
A couple, uh, I saw in your drainage, I mean, drainage, in your odor control, there was a little flyer from Subaru or something, and it had, what I saw that caught my eye is a picture of a, a person with some kind of piece of equipment that's testing the air. Are you familiar with the way that the odors get tested? That's one of the things that I kind of foresee is a big issue on these, and I think you understand by installing a system like this. Is there a, a piece of equipment that we could acquire through, whether it's, uh, the money that's given to the town for accommodations to this type of a system? But is there some way of being able to monitor, if the neighbors say it stinks, and you guys say everything's okay, some technical, some scientific way of evaluating, measuring things, right? So is that...
I'm sure there is a scientific method, there's a third-party testing letter in here showing that the product is effective.
Right.
I don't have the full study that goes with that, but I'm sure it's something we could get and submit.
Yeah, that'd be something, if we could get some information on what, what they use for equipment, that, I mean, if it's something that's purchasable, we'd have one on hand if the issue gets raised in the future, so that would be something.
I'm sure that's covered in the scientific background that goes with that.
Yeah, so if you could provide something like that, so we could confirm the, uh, or have some way of confirming odor and odor, odor status.
Could I be so crazy as to say, would the applicant consider buying one for the building department, so that they could do these inspections?
Yeah, continue to monitor.
It sort of gets everybody on the same level, you know?
I think someone else probably falls on the, uh, CCC a, a little bit in terms of like their odor, um, policies, and, um, I think probably, you can probably project them, uh, exactly what the issue is.
Folks were concerned about how quickly the CCC would...
Um, maybe, you know, on this it says, order armor four twenty, the nasal ranger. That's the name of the, it's a name, I don't know. What's the one it says?
Folks, folks, sorry.
We'll look into it.
Just to see, I mean, and we know, we understand CCC has it, and they, I think they basically say no odor, but odors are really tough when it comes to nuisance and all that, so if we could have some way and have some standard, I think everybody knows what the, what the limit might be. what the limit might be. And if you want to propose some standard, I don't know what might be, what might be the standard that everyone uses and how sensitive people are.
Folks were concerned about how quickly the CCC could respond to complaint about odor from residents. Sir, your name and address also?
Pete Nalatino, Emily Drive. Someone was thinking wasn't it decided at one of the meetings that this facility was going to have a unit built in to prevent any odor?
Yes, a high pressure fog system.
Right, is that right?
Yes.
But we have a guarantee that it's not going to be any odor.
Right.
That's what we're sort of getting to.
Well, that's what, we're, they're proposing that what they're going to install will not have an odor. What our concern is if there isn't, if the neighbors smell something and they notice an odor and they say, well, we're running this fog system, whatever it might be, and it's supposed to work great and it's in, it's fully functional, but people are still smelling something, what we want to do is have some way of evaluating it.
Analytically, maybe.
Right, and that's just to protect both parties.
I mean, and it's, it could be as wonderful for you as it is because you start saying, no, there isn't anything around our building and you go someplace else and it's somebody else and that's sort of, I mean, it's not just to sort of nail you down, it's sort of to protect you also.
It's almost like an inherent policy for us to-
Right.
And as, during the discussion, it was going to be installed on the greenhouses. Is it also going to be on the main building here also?
The, the context currently working on the air handling system for the building itself, that we were just dealing with the greenhouse structure and what the odor control.
Would you, would you consider it on there as what the conclusion comes to?
Yeah, yep.
Is that any kind of duration inside the building?
It's, it's very minimal. It's, it's kind of like planting machine, the little guys, yeah, the little babies into like cotton and loading it onto a robot.
Oh, is there any other processing besides just taking the plants and drawing whatever you're doing? Is it, are they making it into like other edibles, other?
Yep, so we have an extraction laboratory in the blue space down there. That is mostly making distillates and I guess also full spectrum oil. And then the infusion kitchen in the orange, I guess, would be where we take the oil and put it into edible products.
Are all those different colored boxes separate rooms?
As I understand, yes.
Okay.
The, the blue, the green and the orange are separate rooms. Over here we have products coming in from shipping and receiving, so it reacts there where the packaging comes in and their raw materials. Finished product storage is here and this is where the packaging comes in.
Okay, so there's no walls there with it?
This is an open, these are enclosed rooms.
And the refuse from these kinds of oils and things like that, is that going to be handled in a different way than regular office garbage? I'm just, I think that's probably a security plan, so people won't be diving into your dumpster.
Yeah, I mean, after we're done with it, there shouldn't be anything left that's usable. It's just basically black tar. My background's in extraction, so out of that lab, it's complete garbage and probably just put it in pails and ship it out.
But handle it in some way that's sensitive to-
Yes, yeah, it won't be going in the dumpster.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Phil Mallette, Aid Emily. To give you if I've missed this, on the assumption that an odor control system is made up of a central plant, ducts and vents, could you show us on the floor plan where the central component of the odor control system is, where the vents will be and where the ducts will run? And also could we get specs, engineered specs of the odor control system?
Well, we have a, we have a packet that's available that has a third party study that was done on the system that they proposed to use, right?
Yes, so in the package is a picture showing the ends of the greenhouses. So these systems are mounted right on the ventilation currents on the ends of your greenhouses. So on the site plan, those ends would be here, here and here.
But didn't you just point out vents?
Ends of the greenhouses would have the ventilation system on it.
Right, and where is the central component?
It's not a centralized system, it's a number of separate things, a number of on the greenhouse that's there on the vertical walls.
And they would all vent to the east, correct?
But they're all in different directions.
North, south and east, yes. None will vent west.
Correct, the existing building-
The building is to the west, yeah.
Doesn't mean the wind's not going to be blowing to the west, which isn't usual though. So after odor, I, the next question I had was, you're asking for a waiver from looking at drainage for the existing parking lot? Are there any, is there any evidence of any drainage problems, any things this spring that happened that might be going out into the street causing issues or was anything noted?
I didn't see any issues on my two sidewalks.
And there's no indication?
One of them was there in the rain. There's some runoff from the existing parking lot here that goes down in this direction from both of these locks.
So it all drains towards the wetland on the property, it's not going out into the street?
No, the turbo track sort of is a high point in there, so there's a rain break in there in this location. This all drains down in this direction.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Waiter fifty, Emily Drive. Is the greenhouse left?
The greenhouse would be a hollow, hollowed out material.
Okay, so you can't see through it?
Well, the top of the greenhouse would be cleared and the sidewalks would all be traced.
So would any of it visible because the regulation says nothing can be visible?
None of the plants would be visible from the street if someone had it drawn.
Not from the street, but if there's something drawn-
If someone had it drawn, they could see through the top of the greenhouse, but we can't see anything from the site perimeter. So it's compliant with the CCC regulations.
So you could walk around the whole building and not see anything?
What tier application are you going on?
This one's only, this one's ten thousand plus the other fifteen thousand, what's the tier?
Are there any open windows in the greenhouse at all?
Nope, it'll all go through the fan and high pressure fogging system.
Now, any of the pesticides that are going to be used would help prevent it all through the exhaust system?
I'm pretty sure that with the CCC that we're very, very restricted in what pesticides we would use, so.
So what pesticides are you going to be using?
Currently, it would, our schedule of pesticides is if we really need to, neem oil. I don't see like really powdered neem in bugs. This is going to be a very, very controlled environment right from the beginning. We have experience in cultivation cannabis and from that, all, any, if we use pesticides and very strongly against it, we would be using organic. The laws with the CCC are very, very strict on the pesticides that we would be able to use. So currently, we have no real proposed pesticide plan, but it would be things like neem oil and other organic pesticides that we could use.
Would the planning board get the list of pesticides prior to issuing any permits? And is there any residue that would be any in the stormwater from any of the exhausts?
Well, generally what, when we actually ask for something, what we're probably going to get is we'll get, we'll be using the pesticides that are allowed by the CCC. So that's usually the response we get, so it's almost a waste of time. But, but I think that the question about having contact with stormwater is a good one, is that possible?
There will be no contact with stormwater.
I don't foresee any contact.
And there'll be no open windows like you'd asked on the, on the greenhouse, so there's no-
They'll be sealed.
Just go through the exhaust fans.
In the irrigation water, where does the irrigation water end up?
Over the drain. So the CCC has regulations about the recirculation of your-
So you're planning to recirculate it?
Yeah, we have, right.
They're not allowed to discharge it to a separate system, so it's in their system.
Are you going to do that?
No, there will be no discharge.
Is that up with your question?
Yeah, so even if the pesticides were applied, it would not be getting into any of the paint.
They're not going out through the air?
They're not going out through the air, they're not going out through the water.
It's only in the system.
Wayne Henry, the Angel Brook clarification, I think. I heard enclosed loading docks, at the beginning I heard two vans going out and then I heard a tractor trailer. There's quite a difference in length in closed vans, tractor trailer is forty feet plus a tractor. Vans are significantly smaller on the given sprinkler or something. What are we, what are we proposing here, there's a difference, I think.
And quickly, I mentioned the tractor.
Other gentleman did.
Maybe, I guess I misspoke, maybe box truck at most, but it's mostly just vans, like sprinkler vans, and everything that will fit inside would be.
So the depth of the indoor loading days is forty-eight to forty-nine feet, and the tire, the truck, the trailer would fit right in there if they were to have a tractor trailer in the site, which I don't expect, given the nature of the-
But your, as far as your transportation, it's going to be small vehicles.
Small vehicles.
We have FedEx or somebody visits and has a tractor trailer, then it's a different situation.
Different, yeah, we won't be, that'll only be for loading equipment in and will never be.
Not in routine.
That's not routine, no.
Yes, sir.
Tom Billings, it's Emily Drive. You had mentioned the owner of the building is, the building is a section there and that's that small section there. What's happened in the big open space, what's going on there?
That would be part of our client's lease and they have the right to expand in the future for warehouse storage.
Second question, you mentioned lighting in the greenhouse. Is this, hopefully you get sunlight, but is this going to be on when the sun sets, lights on, and that's when you do that?
So in, in the cultivation of cannabis, the plants have basically three parts of their life cycle. So there's like the nursery where they're like being cloned off of a mother plant, that's where they're taking roots, there is, and then, and then there's the vegetative state. In, in these parts of the life cycle, the plant is required to have eighteen hours of sunlight or of light and then six hours of darkness. In the flowering state where we're actually producing the cannabis, where we, the plant is knows just by the photo period, so when it turns to a twelve, twelve, twelve hours of light, twelve hours of darkness, that's when the plant knows to flower. So based on the cycles of whether it's winter or summer, we will either have to cover parts of the greenhouse with light deprivation screening or supplement the light so that the plants are getting the required amount.
So these things could be blowing at night?
Well, that's why we also, that's also why we have the, the light deprivation shielding is because we can close those at night as well so that the light will not be getting out of the greenhouse.
So you let-
That's new to me, what's a light deprivation shielding?
So a light deprivation is where it's a cover inside the greenhouse.
So it's built into the greenhouse as itself?
It's built inside the greenhouse and it's just like a really big blackout part that will blackout certain parts of the greenhouse so that the plants can get their proper light cycles.
So it'll be minimal light-
Light pollution.
Light pollution coming from, yeah.
We can, we can close, the whole thing will probably have the light depth so that we have the flexibility of being able to close off certain portions. So even at night, we could close all of the shades and turn on the lights then so that there wouldn't be any light coming out of the building. And since there are light deprivation, if any gets in, I don't see any getting out.
Agreed.
Understood.
So that's probably something we would want to see in the, in the proposal, that if we're not going to have, I think we have a lighting plan requirement to show that there's not going to be more than a certain amount at the, at the edges, no glare, that kind of thing, so that would be probably a good note on that plan.
We provided that plan to the board showing the security lighting and parking lot lighting.
Right, but also that, it was a good question about operational lighting, just put a note on it as well that we're not going to exceed whatever number you think you're going to be able to keep under.
Yeah, and something about it being an engineered system within the greenhouse that controls this, I mean, it's part of the plan.
And the operation aspect, that it's going to be operated such that it's not all around the plant's needs, it's also going to be to protect the neighbors and protect the outside public.
In the greenhouse, the plants, whatever the plants we have, is it the stage three plants so that that requires only twelve hours of, twelve hours dark, twelve hours light?
As it stands in this plan, it will be the vegetative and the flowering cycle while the first stage of kind of the cloning would be inside.
So that means some of the plants may need eighteen hours of light.
Outside, yes. And that's why we would have the supplemental light and then the, and then the closing.
And also the winter time you may want to close it too.
Yeah.
Yes. In the town's stormwater permitting process, I was just looking through that today and I hit on page ten or in the, in the regulation, there's a whole list of conditions in order to get the different permits for stormwater, starting with education in this whole listing. Just wondering if they followed all of those different permitting application processes.
You got me on that one. What section are you talking about? I don't remember, an education section?
There's a section on different permits and it starts off with the education as far as providing education to all the providers as far as all the different ramifications on stormwater, et cetera, and then it goes through all of the list of conditions. If somebody's applying for a permit, a stormwater permit, it's, I, I, when I Googled West Boylesden stormwater application, the, it was written in two thousand and three and there's a number of different things that somebody applying for a permit has to abide by in order to get a permit for whatever permit they're applying for.
Let me look at-
I think it was on page ten or eleven, it's a fifty-six page document.
Yeah, we're up, we're at thirty-three, I think it is, so I'm trying to figure that, because I think I drafted it, so I don't remember that education part.
That was the first thing as far as education, somebody's making application, they have to provide education in a number of different ways to people in the area that becoming familiar with the permitting process.
Standards, I want back to them.
What's your concern that we're doing it? I'm just wondering if all of the different, I thought, I thought this was a, an application process for, for stormwater and I just, just looking through and just seeing what was part of the, the application process and all the conditions were outlined there in order to get approval for the stormwater permit.
I think you might be looking at, there's a stormwater management plan the town had to prepare.
It was drafted in two thousand and three.
Yeah, that was, that might have been that because the bylaws, this bylaw is, should be a date on this one. The zoning, can you see that one? October-
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight. So the bylaw is, this bylaw, the stormwater bylaw that we're under is, was drafted in two thousand and eight, so I think what you're looking at was the original town- So I think what you're looking at was the original town's stormwater management plan, which it has, there are six standards that have to be. You can correct me, Wayne, there are six standards that have to be applied. One of them is public education and outreach, and I think that's what you were looking at, and that's a different whole proposal. But that's something good to look at, I like the idea. And then you also asked about a waiver for the parking landscaping, or a landscaping plan you asked for. And I guess my question was, what is the current parking look like? And is there a way to make landscape islands in there while you're doing a little beautification to improve things?
So the existing parking lot, through the chair, has one island parking, has parking on the left side and east side, all of which are but the vegetated areas. So there's no interior parking spaces.
There's no interior space for an island.
An interior island, we do the interior landscape planning. In this case, it all but vegetation, so I'd say for that. There are some existing street trees and landscaping on the front of the building that will remain intact. There's some planting bags that are covered by roof, right on the building of the entrance. On this side, maybe we don't fit any landscaping in and active, uh, building and parking. So the key opportunity for doing that would be down here, that could be beautified. And I think it looks nice as open space with grass and then just put the fence that we're fencing now. The board really wants some shows to be combined on that.
Well, I just wasn't sure, it's, it's a requirement in there to look at landscaping, so that's just why I was asking the question. Doesn't seem, I haven't driven by the property and taken a look at it, and I know, well, driven by, but haven't really looked at that in particular, so.
But the example to leave it at?
Yeah, we can see, I mean, we're going to continue, so we can take a look, if board members want to look and see if there's some enhancement. Wouldn't be a big deal if anything.
Is the front of the building on Shu River Street?
Yeah, and that's the brick portion.
Okay, and the main entrance is on the side of the building?
The main entrance was right here in the front of the building.
But the parking lot is on the side of the building, right?
Yes.
Now, because we live here in the winter, and maybe you can answer this question. The durability of the roof of the greenhouse, is it going, is it substantial enough to maintain the weight of weather conditions that we have, especially during the winter? I know here a few years back, you know, we had these winter, ice storms and stuff, and a lot of things that damage. Hopefully we'll never have another one, but I'm just curious. Or do you have some kind of, something in the, on the ceiling that you frost, sometimes you frost it through, that will defrost it so that it doesn't take up on the, on the air?
Well, the, inside the greenhouse is going to be already pretty warm. So the conditions in which we have to grow cannabis, it has to be above seventy degrees. So inside that greenhouse, it's going to be pretty warm, so I would not expect there to be a lot of frosting. And I do have weight limits.
I mean, I'd hate to see, you know, getting a call, the board getting a call saying, oh, the roof collapsed, you know, during the winter.
It generally is one.
Looks like it's a decent angle also.
And it's going to be a new building, so it's going to have to meet all the town, the state codes, so I wouldn't even worry about it.
How tall is the greenhouse? How tall is the greenhouse? Did meet with the building inspector last week. One of his concerns, of course, was the snow load. So there won't be final engineer drives, but the greenhouse roof has a truss system. The maximum spacing of the curbs on the side is four feet, the panels are eight feet long. And it will meet the, the snow, the snow load requirements.
How tall is the greenhouse?
The side height is fourteen feet.
So there's a difference in the way height is measured, so we have to talk about the height to the peak of the greenhouse, or the height as the building code defines it. The town bylaw defines it. So from the finished ground to the highest point of the greenhouse is twenty-six foot seven. But as the building code for the town regulations, the height is measured to the midpoint between the peak and, and the eaves. So at that point, it's fourteen foot seven change.
And from the greenhouse manufacturer, they say engineered to fifty PSI per foot snow load and a hundred and twenty-three mile an hour wind speed.
Like I said, I just was concerned because I just didn't want you guys to get a call during the winter saying that the roof, the roof collapsed.
Yeah, they don't forget to call me, Marty. Wayne, how are you set for this?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as Patrick mentioned, we provided a comment letter dated June tenth. Patrick, I will be glad to be with him and go through all of these things, it's just, it's a lot of technical stuff, not too many concerns. I guess I would ask, Patrick, you've had a chance to at least read this, is there anything that you feel that, in addition to discussing with me, you need the board's input on? It would be probably the prudent time to ask now, so that you don't come on or potentially continue your, your project hearings unnecessarily.
So I think we had requested some waivers, so I think we'd like a little guidance on that, so we can probably answer Wayne's question.
Where are those outlined?
So Wayne's request.
One was requesting a waiver of the need for traffic study, since this is an existing industrial building, so we can, there's an existing employment place.
Yeah, and there's no.
Same hours of operation, there's no.
There's no public access, yeah.
Yep.
So Wayne asked us to mention also the.
I support that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The other was on the interior landscaping and parking lot. My interpretation of that part of the zoning is for interior rows of parking, you would want to have some interior.
You mean two rows, but there's only.
In my mind, these are all perimeter spaces.
Yeah, and I think that.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need a full plan, if we need to add in some supplemental vegetation, then that would, wouldn't require a full plan, we could just probably put that on the utility plans, but yeah.
What's the condition of the pavement today, is it okay?
It's in good condition. There may be a couple patches on this side from the truck journey, but we'll easily place in that area, we'll ease dumpster out at the end of the pipeline. In the current condition, there's about four different dumpsters lined up with different types of recycled materials that are all open to your uncles. So this would definitely be an improvement.
An improvement, yes. That I noticed when I drove by.
Very focused eye.
Yes, and it wasn't pretty flowers.
So one of the other questions was, existing parking lot doesn't need all of the self-act requirements in the current zoning? So if I were proposing a new parking lot, I have to meet particular yard offset requirements. These spaces, existing paved area, doesn't need the offsets, it would be very difficult for us to change it in such a way that we can.
Are the space sizes, why?
Was that a wave?
And the space, like, the interior space between, but, but the, it's the setback that's the problem.
The setback to the property line, so, for example, at the self-property line here, some of the spaces go over the existing property line. But that, that use has been there since the late nineteen eighties, before the current owners uneeded cycling the property. So it's an existing use that's been ongoing.
Who is the owner of that white plant?
Uneeded for thirty years, get a light plant, once the property is sold. So there's no way I can amend that to meet the yard offset requirements.
Imagine.
Probably, if somebody pushed the legal issue, probably a prescription needs made, because it's existed for twenty years, uneeded with both sides.
And they, on their side, there's nothing really going on, I mean, that, that's just a solar field?
Yeah, this is where, right at the bottom here, you see the overhead wires coming in for the security lighting and fencing here for the solar fields.
So it's not impeding that?
It's not impeding.
You thought about putting this earlier on there?
So there's also an existing right of way that comes through the property here. That's, at the time it was conveyed to the disco, maintaining rights for the county and the power to pass it back. And power now has the access office, power's driven drive, it can drive in and out its entire line. So it's unlikely they'll use that by right of, by purpose.
Do you want to get rid of it on the hand, or like ask them if they?
I can't because it's still in the title, so some, some are not there.
In your renters, you're not owners?
We are the tenants, but.
Okay.
Okay, and so the waivers that, you got two, the next one was the minimal impacts require two hundred feet of the site. Yeah, that one was mostly for, like, looking at other buildings and other traffic generation things, so.
So we're showing the abundant building, but we're not showing the curb cut? If you want to see that curb cut, we would have to do some more survey work, but we could have that. That's the only other driver, that would be within two hundred feet. So on the cover sheet of our plan, we have a little location out there, with the two hundred foot drop and drop around it. So you can see all the other buildings and uses that are, that have been kept in place.
Yeah, so that seems reasonable as well.
Do we need something from the owner? Like, when we did cover in farm Saravian?
Oh, we need some evidence that the owner is, that you have some authority to be presenting all this stuff to us, did we, did we get that, or?
That would be.
They signed the form?
Application form has changed, you do have the owner's permission on the application form.
Yes, so it is on that.
Where we buy that form has, has that signature.
Yeah, that, good job on the revised form, yeah.
Oh, we did a good job, yeah, nice.
Good job.
Okay, so Wayne, we're good?
For now, yeah.
Right now?
Meet Patrick and then I anticipate he'll respond in writing to these and we'll do one more review, hopefully that will be it.
Last call for comments from the public. Any questions or comments? We are going to be continuing this public hearing, so there'll be additional chance for additional questions or concerns when it is continued at a future date.
At that future date.
Comments from the board?
No.
Or motions?
I was just going to say I would encourage the investigation, because I understand the HVAC for the buildings, the whole development. To investigate the use of the odor control on the van and also, that's all.
Motion to continue? What date?
Yeah, what date?
How long do you think it'll take to get the engineering stuff squared away?
I'll refer to Patrick to start.
What's your schedule?
We could, we could meet next week or phone call, whatever works.
So why don't we go for a month from now? Because we've got, we're meeting in two weeks, so we'll go to the next, July.
July tenth.
I will not be here at the July meeting.
And then we'll have everything nailed down, so that we'll be here from there, I hope.
I will not be here at the July meeting, just.
When is that?
Either, or just.
July tenth.
I think we only do one, right?
There's only one July.
It'll be a one meeting in July, we're meeting in August.
That's right.
Hopefully it'll be squared away, but yeah. Anyone else not making it in July?
I mean, the tenth of July?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll be wrong.
Gosh, did you guys go on vacation?
I'm going for the fourth of July.
We plan around, we plan anyway.
So was a motion being made?
So, we're rolling to July tenth. Okay, so I move to continue the public hearing for the site plan review, special permit and stormwater management permit for the site at two fifteen Strisberry Street to July tenth at. We were going to have one at seven o'clock at the shrine.
We'll make it seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. At seven fifteen PM.
Yeah, okay. July tenth, seven fifteen.
In the permit, was there also the special permit for the recreational requirement? Just as part of the permitting.
Yeah, I think that's one of the numbers you gave us.
Yeah.
In the application, we.
I provided you with the receipt showing that the applications were submitted to the CCC.
Yeah, no, the zoning section three point two point one point three, that refers to the marijuana section. I think that's what it is.
Yeah, what did you say, three what?
Oh, no, it's three point six, B three and five, but. Can I remember, because I'm thinking our bylaw, our marijuana bylaw is section three point twelve.
Oh, yeah, three twelve, three. Three twelve is medical.
Three point thirteen.
Yeah, three twelve is medical, three thirteen is just.
Three point one.
Three thirteen, so on the application, I don't know that it says three thirteen, let me just read that again.
Oh, I'm just.
Special permit, a site plan review, neither of them says three thirteen, it's three point six and three point two. But maybe that three point two is the use bylaw.
I believe that was the schedule of uses.
Three point two, I just lost it.
It's another bylaw.
Three point two, I, three and four. Yeah, yeah, it must be, because it's not in my set, we only go to H.
That's where the bylaws states the special permits are.
Yep, yep, okay. Insert the new one.
There's a motion on the floor?
Second.
No, second.
So we should go.
You're done?
Yep, that's good, you're all set. Marijuana cultivator.
Motion for a hearing, seconded, made a seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. So you have these.
Hey Phil? Want to take this, Phil? You can have some.
This is the thing about, the system that they're not using.
You can keep that.
And I have to write a report for you.
There you go.
Little bit, little bit.
Do you have a second, Patrick?
I, I, yeah, that was the second.
There were two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night.
These things, which we could.
Thank you.
Good night.
Together with that pile, this is the question.
What's he doing?
Oh, really?
He's going to get a cup of water.
Oh, is he allowed to do that?
No.
Well, we can get through the old business quickly.
Great.
Yeah.
He's not here.
Raj, yeah, so Raj can do this, Raj can do that.
Yes, he's going to do the Holy Cross and the Village Center zoning update.
He is.
All right, good.
We'll do Village Center zoning first, let's do that first.
Oh, you have something from Holy Cross?
No.
So that's.
So let's just say.
So Holy Cross, I talked with the guy after our last meeting, he said he would get the information that we're looking for. He'll get it to us.
Okay, it's still there, status quo.
So, Mr. Village Center zoning.
Village Center zoning bylaw, we got a revised draft from Eli, oh, here he is.
You can talk through it if you want, there's a few.
Yes.
Few highlights.
Come on up.
They're not bad though.
I was going to say, yeah. We recognize behind that one.
Yeah, so when I was here last time around, we talked through all the changes. There's still, there's a few things that are flagged, I just kind of either.
Flagged by us or by you?
By myself and Vinny here.
Okay.
There, there were some that were just kind of adding definitions in, that were just kind of, what is this, a contextual term, I added those in.
Oh, yes.
A precipice, what was it, precipice?
Yeah, it was a.
Calling on arcade.
And a parapet.
And a parapet, yeah.
So those are, those are defined. There was a question about an updated zoning map, and I think Matt Frams might have reached out.
Matt sent me some, I didn't reply to him, he did. Well, was, was it an updated zoning map, or what we're going to do when we do this, we're going to update our zoning map?
Yep.
So to do that, we're going to need a plan showing this new proposed zoning map.
Yep.
So that was kind of what we'd be trying to work with him for.
Yep, okay, yep.
So the board will know that and we will be good. There were, let me see, there was a question about height bonuses, and we, we think the, the maximum.
Right, currently we allow up to thirty-five feet, so this was going to give a bonus up to thirty-five feet, so.
My question was, do we wanna take it out or do you wanna, okay. So we'll take that out.
We'll keep it at thirty five, cause that's what it is even in the single residence district.
Okay.
Um, and then there was a question about public spaces being open at all hours. Or if you wanted to kind of limit to when public spaces would be open.
Public space of being.
Yeah, for the special permit section. There being kind of different items related to site design that encourage different types of open space. And Vinnie applied a question for those open at all times.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the parks, cause what we have in our town park, like at Grayell Park, it closes, I think, at nine o'clock in the summer or ten o'clock when some of the lights go out and they roll up the streets, kind of thing. This is West Boyleson, so I wasn't sure if we wanna have that in our bylaw to be similar to what it is in other places. That was the thought. And I didn't get a massive feedback.
I'm thinking of these as being like pedestrian areas or seating areas outside of a whatever.
It's like the town common is basically what I'm thinking it's gonna be like. Is one of the, like the seats over at the dishegel. Right, but smaller, but same kind of use. Public access.
Depends when the business is.
Social and surrounded.
The only thing I'm concerned with is if there's like a coffee shop nearby and somebody wants to sit outside, but it's in the evening, I don't want to prohibit it.
Right.
So we wanna say something like give it certain hours up until nine o'clock, whatever it is.
Actually, I would, I would say more like, it has hours if it abuts a residence or something like that. That's the, that's what I would be concerned with, especially if it's a coffee shop, you don't want these people hanging out until, you know, midnight or something like that, just.
It depends on when their store is open.
Right, and so we can tie it to the hours of the operation of the store, so that it, and it'll be closed one hour after the
That would make sense.
The abutting businesses are closed.
Yeah, yeah, the latest.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and just so, and I don't know, how is it enforced on the other ones?
That's, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
Shot on sight.
It would be a police enforcement issue.
Cause I, I don't want it to be horrible either.
And generally, it's not just walking through and sitting there talking to a friend, it's not a problem. It's when it gets to be some.
Some raucous, raucous party.
Kids with.
Kids with skateboards.
Yeah, nothing but.
Boom boxes and stuff, yeah.
So yes, you getting the idea there, Eli?
Yep. And then I think the last question was about right now, the special permit is really only for lots larger than three acres. And there's a question of if you want to allow special permits for just really any other kind of use within the Village District. Right now, it's, it's like I said, it's already in to be eligible to apply for a special permit, the site must contain at least three acres of particular spottable land. For the purpose of the bylaw, I may be taking this as a fine definition there. But the, the purpose of the special permit is really wanna allow more of a planned development to occur with.
Right.
But the, the follow up question is, do you wanna allow special permits for?
When we talked about the uses that we want to allow, we talked about allowing those uses by right, so they don't need a special permit. So the only time we would want them to have a special permit upon them is if it's like a small development, a three acre development. Right now, there are no properties in there that are three acres, right, I'm pretty sure those might have closed. So they'd have to be combining or acquiring.
Yeah, I, I agree, and then I'm concerned also that we want, we still want to encourage the, the concepts and I don't know, like the pedestrian area, like encourage the pedestrian development, encourage parking in the, whatever, in the back, things like that. And I just don't know if you don't have, if it's an as of right thing, then it's sort of not, um.
But sometimes, even though it's an as of right thing, it's still a zoning bylaw, so the building inspector, then that's why we sometimes have trouble with site plan review is that it doesn't trigger site plan review, the development, but that doesn't mean all the zoning bylaws don't still apply and the building inspector has to do the enforcement or the review of that. So that's why we're building with the new building inspector, trying to build a rapport, so that if he's got a situation that's kind of questionable and there's multiple things going on, that he'll come to us and ask us and talk to at least someone.
I wonder if we can invent a new minor site plan review or something like that, which is more like a what's that thing, the, the round table? So they could come in and we could just discuss what's going on, but just so you could have some input, you know? Oh, I didn't know I was even supposed to put a pedestrian anything.
So then we'd have to look at what uses would trigger that, right?
Yeah, well, we'd have to sort of look at where we could get that, where we're concerned with things and where we want to talk about.
Would you have any ideas, Eli, about a a scaled back site plan review?
So they don't have to get an engineer involved.
Yeah, I would have to, off the top of my head, to be honest, not really, but I, I could ask.
Yeah, if you could, that would be good, cause I mean, it, it would seem like it would be difficult to kind of put into words, but having a round table, which is bringing all, we have a round table initiated by the building inspector, when someone comes in with kind of a bigger project or something a little quirky, so that everyone can kind of give feedback. So the person doesn't go down the road and invest a lot of money when it's gonna get blown out of the water by one thing or something, it's gonna be too difficult for them to afford. So it just helps them along.
And, and it also clarifies where it ends up right and where it's getting too big and it needs something else, you know? You know, if the project is, you know, is, needs some, a call. The round table's the right place to do that, you can do it this way and then you don't, do it this way and you do.
Oh, okay, so you can give guidance to develop.
Get their project through as officially as I can. But I don't know where, I don't know how to trigger it or even, cause it really would just be like an invitation to a meeting to sort of present your project. You know, we're not proving anything, we're not signing anything, we're just.
Right, and in our site plan review bylaws, we have that you're encouraged to do a preliminary review. It would almost be something like that, but a little more more required.
It'd be more villagey, I'd like to say. Villagey. That's why it's in the village, I don't know.
We're gonna need a definition for that one.
Yes, villagey.
Yeah, there's something I can definitely.
I mean, you don't have to, but I was just thinking that.
Well, if it's possible.
To, to sort of guide people along, so that it all sort of gets, goes in one direction, that'd be nicer than than skipping like everyone somewhere else, somebody doesn't do anything and sort of doesn't pay any, you know?
Sure. That's about it, there weren't that many.
Acts and.
I did have some comments.
Awesome. You were supposed to email them to him.
I know, I didn't.
And you have comments, that's good.
Uh, designing parking facilities, uh, it's something C, I don't know what the letters.
You have a page on it?
I don't think my page. My, my lobby just dropped in.
I think I got it though.
I, parking requirement, B, shared outside parking. C, designing parking facilities, the pretty parking is prohibited in the streets right of way unless approved by the planning board. We need to put in some sort of design guidelines to sort of control that, otherwise, how do we even decide?
How do we decide what's appropriate?
Say that one again, I thought, I don't remember anything was allowed in the streets.
It is, parking is prohibited in the streets right of way unless approved by the planning board, so we just need some way to make that call.
Well, yeah, we would use what we would use in any, if we do a subdivision design review, that's.
We, we remember all the parking.
We haven't, we could for, you know, when we do investment.
Criteria to say this is appropriate.
Yeah, cause usually we use wing for that stuff. But this.
We could just say we'll use wing.
We'll use wing, I guess.
But like a, a.
The standards for street parking, just pull up, I forget whether.
Then we change the definition.
Ashtray, it wouldn't be rural street design, but whatever the.
Villagey.
Villagey, it's a sort of villagey.
Yeah, yeah.
More villagey stuff.
That's the idea, but we need something more.
Exactly, we need more of an engineering or design guideline.
I can look up that a little too.
That was something that we spent a lot of time last time on.
That's right.
Talking out, patching out, so. Reflect it.
That's good.
Yeah, and then the next one, J, design standards A buildings for flat roofs will be allowed in multi-story buildings as long as the roof line projects outward from the building surface as decorative cornets or.
Or parapet.
I mean, I don't, some of the houses are just gonna be like houses, so there's not gonna be many parapets. Or any. So I, I don't know if we need that.
Scratch that, I mean, is it needed, we could just.
It's nice that we have the word cornet, cornet and parapet in our bylaw, villagey.
Well, if we don't need the extra words, then I'd go with scratching it out, some shorter is better.
It sounds like what they wanted was sort of something to come out over the.
So it looks pretty instead of just being a flat roof block, right?
A flat roof like we just got in the last one, but that's in the industrial area.
I think we were just talking about, um.
Right, it's to prevent it from looking industrial.
Exactly.
So that's the intent of what it is, so.
More villagey, less industrial.
More villagey, less industrial, yes, yes.
I mean, like a front, like a porch on the front of a house isn't necessarily conforming to that, but it's nice. But the front of like honey farms or doing the honey farms is, is not, is very industrial.
Yes.
But, but it has a flat roof and.
Right, the flat roof is, yeah.
It is missing a corner.
There's no parapet at honey farms.
There is not, watch these farms now, there is not.
All right, so we'll look at the wording there, what was that section?
Uh, design standards for buildings.
With the flat roofs.
But I guess it's J, A four.
Okay.
F, N, one. J. No, I don't know. Let's see, it's after, wow, what's actually, I lost my indent, denting. Looks like it's under additional design standards F. Hold on, F, E, F, G, H, I, uh, I decision, sorry, it's over I decision. Number five. The applicant has provided adequate legal and operational documentation to ensure that the required access parking and stormwater management utility operations in open space within the proposed development shall adequately permit. I have a question about stormwater management. And if it's a little tiny development, there may not be any room for doing any stormwater management besides what just is there.
Yes.
So how do we?
I think what, that, I don't have that in front of me, but I think what it was, was that's to have an operation and maintenance plan for whatever is needed, so if you need an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater, you have it in there. If you don't have any stormwater.
Well, but they might have stormwater, but there's no way to manage it except to let it go in the street like they've always.
Right, but sometimes, okay, right, but it's, um, then that's not managing stormwater, that's just.
Right, but that's what's there.
But if they have a catch basin, it would be, you have to clean the catch basin once a year or keep the leaves out of it in the fall, that kind of thing.
But the catch basin in the road?
No, in their property, if there is one in the property.
Like, but nobody in the house has any stormwater.
No, right, but this is for within the village district, so if there's a business and they have a parking lot, they're.
Well, if they, if they were to install a parking lot and they had an opportunity to do this, but if somebody's got a house and they just wanna open a small business in their house and there's no real development except for doing it, then there's no stormwater management and we're not gonna be able to.
We don't need to have an operation and maintenance plan.
Yeah, we would just, it would sort of be waived, if it'd be the existing condition.
Right, well, what does, what does actually say?
Well, this is under.
Right, it's under I.
Decision.
Yeah, so.
Planning board need deny or approve an application for a special permit with those conditions specified in the zoning bylaw pursuant to the following criteria. One, proposed zone consists of purposes listed in the proposed, in the purpose section. Number two, all application standards for use parking and dimension requirements are met. Number three, all applicable design standards listed in the design sections, design standard section of the bylaw are met. Four, where multiple structures are proposed, the site design reflects a thoughtful arrangement of zones that will facilitate the movement of pedestrians between structures through the use of sidewalk, counter walkways, alleys and open space features. And then five, the applicant has provided adequate legal and operational documentation to ensure that the required access parking, stormwater management, utility operations in open space within the proposed development shall adequately permanently be maintained. So is this really just to say?
So it needs to be adequate for what's being proposed, so if someone's not proposing anything associated with one of those items, we don't need to have it written.
I was just, I was worried that we were gonna get in trouble with stormwater management if they were just sort of taking their house and putting the dentist office in it and not doing anything.
Well, that's good, that's why I wanted you to read it, I don't, didn't remember the wording, so that seems like, it says adequate a couple of times there, so there's a lot of leeway.
Way of strict compliance, I love that one.
Well, that's, that's what we do when we read the.
But we have the words as allowed to waive strict compliance. Like in the sign by law.
But isn't that what it is saying there?
Well, we're saying that the applicant has provided adequate legal and operational documentation to ensure that is there. So we're sort of putting it to them and we're, maybe we do or don't, so we'll look that up.
I get, I, I guess I'm missing, it says they have to provide adequate information, so that's all we say, it's gotta be adequate.
But if there is no ability to do stormwater treatment, there's no storm.
So then.
But we're not, and they're not submitting it, and it, and it's not.
Right, and it's adequate.
Then it is adequate, right, yeah.
It's not adequate, if they're not doing any stormwater.
If they don't need to, then it's adequate.
I'm not saying that, that's the thing, I'm not saying they don't need to.
Oh, you're saying they do need to.
They may need to, I don't know, but it's such a small little project and, and if, if they're gonna go and put in like a drainage ditch or retention basin or something like that, it may just turn them off completely to the whole project because it's expensive.
Well, all this is saying is the applicant, when we do a review, we can approve it or deny it, and it's based on these five things. One of these things is that the applicant has provided adequate legal and operational documentation. So this is just to make sure that whatever they're doing is giving them a legal stand to do it and the operational description to get the work done. If they're not saying they're doing any stormwater management or, uh, doing anything else, they don't need to provide anything.
The project where they say they're not doing any stormwater management, no stormwater management, and they should be?
No.
Well, no.
Right, cause then it wouldn't mean.
Then it wouldn't be adequate.
Right.
If we say they need to do it, then they need to do it, I think. I mean, if it's in, we're only gonna say it if it's in the bylaw.
I was hoping that there'd be like a community, like they would let them go into the road or something like that somehow, because like if you look in front of like Dairy Queen, there's that great big retention basin right in the front. And if that's the only place where they can put a retention basin, then they can't put a pedestrian wall right there, if you're not gonna walk through their retention basin.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna sort of be contrary to what we're trying to do if we're gonna have that, like Dairy Queen would not be able to be in our. With, with that basin right in front of them.
Right, but they could.
Or the police station.
Right, but they could just move, put a walkway in a different area, or they could move that, if part of the design is to have the pedestrian access, you incorporate the whole product in your site design, and that's what they would have to do in this area, so that if they need to have pedestrian access, they're not gonna put a wall up across the access, so.
No, I, I, I just anticipate stormwater management not being conducive sometimes, cause it takes up a big, takes up a problem in the local.
Do you have a suggestion about how to change the wording, otherwise I think we should.
Unless we can let them, like, like I was, I was saying, can we allow centralized stormwater management, like C P R development? And that, that was the only thing that I would say we could do, but then it requires, they've had some centralized.
Yes, we could, yeah, but we haven't required it anywhere and.
Right, so nobody's made a big basis.
But when someone does one of those three acre combined lots thing, then they would do that, combine storm.
And put on there's stormwater in one place.
And then do whatever they wanna do with the other areas.
Okay, so I, I just, I'm, I'm hoping that stormwater management doesn't, in the villagey stuff.
Okay.
So I guess we're gonna change the wording, but that was just.
Okay.
Got it?
Good. Good.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
It's a lot more discussion than what I was gonna get. It's a lot more discussion than what I was gonna say.
All right, we have new business. The bond horse and circle, Mr. Ali. Come on up. So what's been happening with Bonnie?
We got the application for Bond.
Tri-party bridge?
Yes, for, yes, and then we had treasurer, what's Bonnie?
Bonnie.
She's a treasurer, so she reviewed the form, she was okay with the form. Um, and then we sent it off to town council and. Um, and then we sent it off to town council and haven't heard anything back. You contacted them at all? I haven't heard anything at all. We also sent, you also sent the estimate to VHB? And I haven't heard back on that either.
So I, I did not formally send it to the board yet. Um, Ali sent me his draft.
Yes.
We reviewed it. We updated some, um, unit costs, a couple of things that we determined was quite a bit overlooked or were a little bit light. A couple of extra items. Um, I mentioned to Mr. Ali tonight that, um, the board reminded me there was a couple of things I might have even overlooked adding to that. So I think Ali wants to discuss those with you. But, um, I have not formally sent that to you guys yet. I would guess I, I didn't, I didn't realize it was actually on the agenda tonight, or I would have probably done that.
Yeah, no, that's, we're still waiting for town council. So that's kind of bottom.
On the easement part, that the water easement going to.
Yes.
What happened was when we were doing the work, I had a meeting with water department. It was a rather easy way of bringing and connecting it to the water tank instead of going to Lawrence Street.
Oh, okay. So this is, and you didn't submit a change to us, right? We hadn't seen this before?
I had to drop the easement and get everything done. Water department agreed to it. That's how they wanted it done because it was closer, but we'd not be blasting close to the water tank.
That's nice. That's a good idea.
Does that affect the, uh?
What happened was.
That's what I'm waiting here.
Yeah. The, uh, right of way, the, the walking, the walking path was supposed to be on top of the, uh.
Waterline.
Waterline.
Yes. So we eliminated this water line from here, went from here right into the driving of the water tank.
Which is up here.
Right, right. That way we are not going to Lawrence Street.
Flipping water line.
Right. This, again, it's all passed on, all trees gone. If you want me to clear the tree, I can clear it, but there's no reason for it.
Well, the reason is to have the access that.
There is an access.
Where?
It's country walk.
That's what?
Going through the trees.
That ain't.
No, it's not.
Not a chance.
So I can cut the trees.
Well, you gotta put the path in that was proposed too. You cut the trees and whatever it was, the six inch stone dust path for four, six feet wide and the easement on it. Okay, so yeah.
You don't have to cut too many trees.
Yeah, we don't.
Right, right.
It's still be a country walk.
Right, right. And it doesn't have to be perfectly straight. If there's a couple of good, nice trees and you can go around them, don't dig up the roofs. Just put some stone dust, make it nice. I mean, we don't need you to dig it in and put a sub base under there.
Probably have the machine is about twelve feet wide. So anything you go, it can be wide.
It has to be twelve feet wide.
It's twelve feet means it has to move around, so it has to be.
Has to be bigger than, yeah.
It has to be like, yeah, twelve feet wide is proposed. I thought I discussed with the board.
That's big. That's a wide walking path. Yeah.
That's the easement.
Right, well, that's the easement. Is there a detail on?
The Boy Scout troop can walk shoulder to shoulder.
I thought there was a cross section of it, what it was supposed to look like. What did, does it say like a six foot wide walking path or?
Install a boulder on the other side of the barrier to prevent other ride vehicle access.
Yeah.
If this thing was aligned here.
I thought there was a, on a detailed sheet, I thought there was something that said that it was a certain.
I didn't, I didn't see any. I didn't see any. Is there anything on the detailed cuts that shows the depth down from the water line and maybe something over there?
Yeah, it's, it's a grading. So what we're looking at here is a grading for that. And whatever that width is there.
Twenty feet.
Right, the easement is twenty feet, but you can only, you can see that the grading just shows this little path here. That's the width that we need to be able to walk.
Yeah, that's a stone dust situation, but I had to clear up everything to build that. Going around the street. That's why I didn't clear anything up on one legislation from the board.
What's the minimum width you can do?
Would it be, would it be proved, um, for one of the board members to maybe walk the site with Ali and just kind of choose a path that makes sense so that he doesn't do something and then you say, that's too bad you cut down that twenty four inch joker or whatever? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
Twenty feet worth of.
Twenty feet worth of trees is a lot of trees.
It's a lot, right? Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of waters.
I, I missed the, have you installed the water line? But it wasn't, it didn't need to be where it was proposed.
Actually, the biggest easement, what happened was, this is the way easement was going, so we missed it when this came.
So are the, are the, are these trees cut?
This was already the lodge.
Oh, it's a metal?
Well, is it possible to use?
Oh, was, okay.
For the lodge, except the lodge.
What's the easement look like now for the water line? Yeah, but is it easy to walk? Is it really, so, and so instead of having the walkway go up here and cutting down all these trees, just have the walkway come up to here?
I can do that.
But is it, but is it walkable?
Connecting to what? Connected to what?
There's a driveway here.
And there's, and people would, right, but would people have access to be able to walk down here? I think this is.
It's West Park, so water department.
Yeah, it's water department. So can you check with the water department and see if they have any issues since they moved this from there to here? We were gonna go from the town road up.
So can they go this way?
Can we have access for the people?
They didn't move it, I moved it. Because it was not more easier. Instead of blasting close to the water tank, not a bad idea.
It makes sense.
So that makes sense.
There was a lot of bad idea.
But can you connect?
The flood insurance for the houses.
Yeah, no, it, it makes sense. But if we need, if we're gonna have people walking on the water district's land, we need to get their approval. So if we wanna use this access here as the walkway without having to do all the clearing or whatever it is over there, we need to get permission from them to have, allow the public to walk up here and walk down there.
Have they done it in the past?
Some, they don't, I don't know that they really care. They don't want people up near the tower. But this area here, they can just put a little sign and a, whatever they have down here that says, don't go beyond here. Just move it up there. And then you don't have to wipe out a bunch of trees.
It's all clear now, so.
Yeah.
I don't mind. That, that's not too steep or it's imprudent. I still think someone should look at it.
Yeah, I'll take a ride over there.
I could have Larry walk it with Ali or whatever, but I think, we could do that. Be glad to do that. I really think that someone from this board should walk it because you guys are gonna get the complaints. You guys know, you know the pedestrian circulation in this area. When we were doing this whole permitting, I really couldn't follow what this was connecting to because I just don't know, I don't know the whole area. So I think that someone from the board should look at that to make sure that you're comfortable. Because if you get complaints, they're just gonna call you. This isn't what was proposed. That's what they're gonna say.
Yeah.
So I would just, again, I'll be glad to have someone do it. We may have a different perspective on it than you.
Yeah, but have, have one of your guys do it based on typical walking for somebody to make it safe and.
Yeah, I'll be glad to do that.
Secure.
This is steep though.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. It might be more.
So if that's the case, then maybe the other option is maybe just walk, come up with a pathway, cut down just a couple of trees and just have a meandering path through there that's reasonable. At a more, a more reasonable grade.
Because if you're just putting in stone dust, you don't have to have a backhoe and excavator.
Do you think that's a reasonable, more reasonable grade than?
Well, it is.
It is?
Well, based on the contours over there. It's dead level across here and it's going up. Well, actually, that's.
Well, that's, that looks level.
It's one, well, it's level there, but he's cutting into the slope there. So he's catching up. Goes up and gets to a level spot here. And here it just goes up and then he's got a side cut here that then runs level. So we gotta take a walk.
So it's an interesting walk and not flat.
I think the planning board should have a walk. Side walk.
You'd have to post it. So we gotta do individual or two at a time.
All what we can do is I'll walk with Larry.
Yep.
Maybe one of the planning board member.
I'll give Larry some survey flag. Alright, he can just go flag trees on either side and just the pathway will go through that. That way you guys can look at it.
Right, if we, if we can't use the existing pathway.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to reduce the impact. People don't like when you cut down trees.
Yeah, I know.
There were a lot of trees here.
Yeah.
Oh, they were, yes.
We couldn't even bring the excavator in to carry it. So first we had to make a room, drop some trees, make a room and then come and bring the kicker in.
Yeah, that's.
I had a lot of ledge.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So on the bond situation.
The bond, we'll have it on our agenda for the next meeting, because then.
I have it on, I didn't have, I have a signed copy. If the number changes.
You got the changes? There are some changes. I actually, when I read it, you've got something referencing a bond number from two thousand and fifteen.
No, that must be the copy page job.
Yeah, there's a couple of those. And it talks about the earth removal board in the first line of, on the first page there. The earth removal board isn't involved at all. And then it doesn't say anything about this being a subdivision.
Actually, this is a regular. What I got a tablet was from our other project, one of the.
Yeah, from, because we needed to haul material out from NUI, I think.
No, no, from here actually, for once at ten fifty five over project. That was the bond we got it.
Which one? Oh, over on Shrewsbury Street? Yeah.
Fifty five over.
Yeah, because they hauled, you guys hauled out a lot of rock out of that one.
No, the other project, not my project. That's fifty five over, right? Oh, angel book on the side. Angel book, yeah, angel book.
Oh, jeez, they, yeah, they were moving a lot.
That one was from this one which I had a copy of.
Oh, okay, so that's what it was.
Do we have a new setup bond which was?
Well, we're gonna, we sent it to town council, so whatever they come back with, that'll be on the ones. Town council is a compliment a page.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so they've got, I'm not sure who's working on it. We sent it to, I think Carolyn.
Carolyn, I know Carolyn.
Well, she's, she's given it to somebody else. So I'm not sure who, actually I should know, but I don't remember the name. So they got it last week, so they should be getting it. Um, because once she sent it to me, the doc, uh, the word document, I sent it off to Nancy and she sent it right to.
I sent the word doc also so that she has to.
Right, so that's what, yep. So she'll hopefully just have the easy corrections.
So the bank bond tri-party agreement is good?
Yeah, Bonnie was okay with it. I wasn't sure.
I think Bonnie was looking into another bank.
Something about an insurance bond or something like that which someone tried to execute and it didn't work. So this one she said will work.
Nowadays, all the towns are not taking the letter of credit either. Because of, uh, it expires.
Right.
Tri-party doesn't expire.
Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah. So it was good. Bonnie was right on top of it. We're gonna miss her. She's leaving, so. But, um, she was very helpful.
I have to wait for the next meeting, not my.
Yeah, she, right, then we can sign. Well, you're gonna have to re-sign everything anyway, but we'll get that to you before then.
How about you want a check?
Check.
What was the bond was.
Oh, the bond, right, right.
I don't think I have any, not planned for this plan.
What about the plan?
I have brought A and R plan for next meeting to be signed.
Okay, for.
Oh, you're changing this to lot lines? Okay. Oh, for the easement?
No, not for the easement. This, that would be a separate, uh, plan required. This is the A and R plan. Lot, what's his name, uh, Kenny's.
Quest.
Quest. Janice.
Yeah.
Is selling the land to me.
Really?
That's not, two years too long.
Wow. Oh, man, okay.
So.
So you're gonna get an eighth lot or whatever it is in there?
One lot, yeah. One extra lot.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I have A and R plan for it, signed by Janice, the copies.
Oh, okay.
See when the, planning board can review it and in the next planning board we can get it signed.
Yes, well, actually, let's take a quick look at it because we have twenty one days, so that puts us within that timeframe, so.
With the brother, the son forget going up the road, the guy on the left on the right.
On the right.
Going with all the pictures and.
I really remember.
He had the above ground pool. He had an above ground pool. And this section was owned by the project. And this section was by Janice.
So your lot, the old lot line, okay, alright, so that's why. And is a drainage easement?
Oh, him.
Oh.
Theatrical.
Yes.
Theatrical.
Yes, oh, him. I remember.
That's alright, that's good. What did he do?
He sold a portion of his property.
It's under agreement. He hasn't sold. Did he sell the whole thing, Ali, or just this?
Just the.
Just this, okay.
So lot ten, lot nine. What's, lot ten, that, isn't that, that's his, that's his existing house. It's not a lot.
That's the existing house, yeah.
Right, okay. Can I see the signature block on this? Because it needs to be a, the planning board endorsement is not. There's actually this specific wording that we use. So he's gotta check our subdivision regs, whoever prepared this.
Yeah.
Who is it?
You don't wanna know. There's a specific wording that has to be put on the plan, so you might as well just take these and then just give them to Melanie after he revises it.
Yeah.
That's why I'm glad.
Do an A and R for the other guy's property?
He, she's signed it.
Oh, she's signed it, okay.
Right, right.
I get A and R your house, you just hang on.
And make sure, and make sure if it's a husband and wife, you get both signatures.
Can you get the mortgage as both of them also?
Okay, that's, as long as it's all, it's on the lot. What's that?
What's the fee gonna be for that one?
Three hundred.
So I give the.
Six hundred? All in favor, say aye. No, three. So, okay.
This thing has to, Janice has said in the.
Yeah, there's a different wording. Um, it basically says that, but it's a legal thing that is required in our.
You can copy from some other one, it's not from.
Oh, it's on this one.
Take a picture. Same page.
It's just right there. And have them give us five lines to sign. Give us five numbers.
This wording or that wording?
This one.
This one, okay.
And can I take a look at your form just to make sure that's done?
Yeah.
No sense in coming back.
I need it myself, so I must have done something wrong.
Boston Circle, yeah. Alright, so it's in, he's gotta circle one of these. It's a single residence district and it requires a hundred and twenty feet of frontage, I think, because I don't think it's.
One hundred.
Yeah, so he just needs to fill that in here. Crescent builders.
I can do this. I can do this and I'm only Janice and me.
Okay. And what's that scribble underneath Janet?
That's my signature.
That's you?
Yeah. The proportion of land which is under.
Right, right.
So you're gonna keep it free when lost?
Maybe write your name under that, so.
Is it gonna end up?
Can you read that one?
You end up with that ball with no money?
That's a, that's a tough day. You gotta get one of these, get the stamps. But yeah, you can get it all taken care of. We should take care of that easily then, so.
So when you send me that, uh, bond, I will look. I got a few more comments from the board. If we look at it, I asked Larry to walk the site one more time.
He was there today.
He was, okay, so that's probably what he's doing.
He was looking at the, he asked me what the easement, I told him, it's not done.
I wasn't sure.
But I wanted to ask the board about it.
Right, right. And then before you go, there's a question on NUI. Um, I took a drive by and I didn't see any changes on the sidewalk and the monuments and the trees.
I had to move the sidewalk. And I didn't want to plant the trees.
Been too dry?
No, right now I don't wanna do it. It'll be.
No, that's true, yeah. No, that's alright.
Two, three months I'll take care of it. And, uh, on the payment schedule, we are in schedule, but they are just delaying it with the highway project. They go for the big projects first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a little job. Is there some way you can fill in where the monuments are so the kids are not gonna?
I can do that.
Just.
And you're asking about the stop sign also?
Oh, on Davidson, right, yes.
I have already, I assume it's coming.
Yeah, because when I drove through there, I was like, oh, yeah, it's gonna be traffic and it's gonna get ugly, so let's get the sign up.
I mean, would you, would you mind sending a, um, email to Paul, I guess as the chairman, just summarizing what you're intending to do, they're getting.
For NUI, for NUI.
We need to be able to respond to that.
Constantly, people calling them, um, they, they feel that they're not getting any response when they're trying to call you, so can you just send a?
You know, listen, I, you know, when you call me, I'll.
I'm sure you do, I, so if you could just write, write it down, he can forward it on to them and then they don't.
They wanna, they wanna, residents wanna.
They want a response.
And what about the two beds, please?
He said he's gonna replace them, he's gonna replace them.
Just not yet.
If you can send me an answer, I can forward it to these folks.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
There was a problem with the planning board email, it was jumping back for some reason.
Oh, was it?
All right.
Um, did it come back today? We, we've got something today.
No, 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 I think, I think it was the problem.
Was it an individual address or?
It was for the planning board.
It might be, um, I heard that there was some stuff going on in the town hall, so I don't know if it was just at the, a certain hour increment.
And one of the things in the Westland, that, uh, the cut was that made.
Yeah, uh, I think Larry is just looking at that, to see whether.
No, no. Actually, I'm not sure. No, Brian was there.
Yeah, Brian was there.
When they were out there now, the fast stuffs were. Sharon called me from, uh, building department right away, when the trucks were going, and Brian was there from, uh, Houston, and he looked at it, it's.
He didn't think it was, yeah.
The whole thing, it was not the trucks.
He thinks it's a plow.
The whole machines he won't, won't make it there.
Okay.
The problem is, the whole berm is like a snake.
Yes.
The whole berm has to be replaced by the town. Town owns it, I don't own it.
Yeah, but, uh, I thought that that's the one because of the.
So we didn't see anything, but the feedback, Brian was out there during paving, and he did look at that, and his impression to me is, it didn't look like any of the equipment had hit it. It looked to me, to him, it looked like it was a plowing issue over the course of that. He, but again, we're not positive, we didn't see a damage, but it didn't look like one of the trucks had damaged it from his off the.
The berm is like snake.
Yeah.
I, I saw it when I drove by, and it, it's hard to tell after the fact, what caused it, it's hard to tell.
It couldn't mean that there's maybe plows.
I know, I don't, I don't know.
There's no evidence for it.
There's no way you can tell.
Unless somebody voted out before and after this.
Yeah, but the, you are the one working there, you know, you are the one bringing in heavy equipments now, right?
You are the one plowing, right?
Yes, but the flow is not doing to damage that much.
It does appreciate.
Is it the existing street?
Yeah, yeah.
Davidson, yeah, yeah.
You saw that picture on that last, last.
Just to kinda give the board some, some perspective, how far away from the entrance drive was it roughly?
It's about, uh, is the second house.
So a hundred, oh.
Hundred, hundred feet.
So clearly, trucks turning in and out of Westland Circle didn't do it, right, so I mean, is it possible there was a truck park, maybe?
Uh, at times, you know, they, at times, they were parking trucks, both the side of their road.
Okay, so, that's, that's, that's a possibility.
There are, when you bring in the trees and other things, all the trucks were standing there.
Yeah, but the thing is, they're standing in the trees. It's not a smaller, it's a wider, it's a bigger, something to know.
There's no way you can tell.
Hard to tell that, what you do.
Right, if I would have done something, I would be for it.
Yeah.
That's a very, that's a very important one. That's why Brian looked at it and.
So you're gonna repaint the whole one?
He's right.
I can do anything.
Those asphalt roads are so fragile, actually.
I don't know, it's hard to tell.
I looked at the berm, it was really fragile and.
So you're gonna replace it with granite all the way down?
All right.
All right, keep moving, keep moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, yes, we got that. What's the score?
Uh, it's not good for the Bruins, two nothing, not the Bruins.
So you have to keep meeting going until they, like?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's because we're still meeting, that is what the problem is.
So we have an A and R plan for Fairbex Street, which is this.
Prepared for this week, this one.
This one, right? So what do we have here? What's going on?
There it is.
It's between Route twelve and one ten.
One thousand and, uh.
Other way, you can't turn. Good luck, Wayne, good luck, trip back to work.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully the Pike will not be busy.
What, no number on it?
Did I forget one?
What's it, this?
Oh, it's on.
They're moving this line by ten feet.
Yeah, it's probably the one you gave me.
The purpose of this plan is to divide the land.
Sorry, I'll take care of it.
Of John and Marcel Doherty into plot four R and parcel A. Parcel A is not to be considered an independent building lot. Parcel A is.
That's tiny lot.
This.
It's near.
That little alley.
Parcel A is to be conveyed to and combined with the land owned by Patrick and Sarah O'Connor to form lot three R.
So they, they are giving this land.
They're giving them ten feet in.
Yeah.
So what would that?
They're swapping.
Why is that?
Because the one that's giving, I think, is selling his property, I mean, it doesn't really matter to us, but that's kinda the background story.
Just gives them a little more of a buffer, I guess.
So while they have a chance to do it, they're, he's selling it to those people, they've probably been mowing it or have a garden over it or something like that. So they're just neighbors being neighbors, so that's good.
That's nice.
All right, so what do you have to look for on that?
What do we look for?
Storm footage?
Storm.
Stormwater?
No.
For like sta- stamps and official things like that?
It needs to be stamped and signed by a surveyor, yep.
Oh, I got one.
Professional land surveyor.
Does it have, uh, what do we just throw? Yep, frontage and access.
And no, and no water feature impeding the access.
The access, it's accessible access, yep.
Accessible access.
Accessible access?
Accessible access.
Well, I couldn't think of another word, but yes. So it's frontage and access, so access is what it means. Yep, you don't have to open it up?
No, it's right here.
Pulled it nicely from this side.
You did.
Awesome.
It's, it's a check for a thousand dollars to me, so we just send it here.
Another one?
Guys, we need that real, the.
I need the mile.
A mile of pen?
Yeah.
Oh, it's in the book? Will this one work?
Oh, well, I'll slide right out.
This'll work.
Yeah, try it, if not.
Yeah, why don't you go get one?
Hand me that one, instead of stepping over, just like.
You got it.
You're typical family member, let's step over and don't hand it to her.
That's right, that's right. Oh, yes, take it on the stairs to go upstairs and watch it there.
Be a long time.
Those stamps are great.
Oh, it's great.
What happened?
It's great, it's just, it's very exciting. All right.
He's tall, can we just hear? Bases were loaded in the bottom of the ninth, the best lot.
Oh, they walked them in?
Yep, one, four to three.
That must go pretty loud, I think.
Fine, it's got the wind.
Barnes did?
Yeah.
That's not fair.
March is gonna be the afternoon game. Six twelve nineteen. Well, somebody else is gonna go, what line am I on? So if anybody has any plans to go to the meeting in public, they just got about seven, yeah.
Another one?
Yeah, Bob Kaufman, Bob Kaufman's been shot for, uh, for murder.
Yeah, the tourist, the tourist industry is not gonna do well there.
Did they make a motion, should we win a privilege?
Oh.
I did not.
I didn't think so.
The real approval, we, what do we do? We accept?
Endorse, endorse.
Endorse to endorse, we have an hour of, what's the name, uh, two fifteen to fifteen, we are gonna sign.
You made the motion?
Motion second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, man, for keeping us honest. It's a tough job, but somebody's gotta do it.
Nobody else needs this, I'll get this one. I don't like elastics, know that?
You don't trust me?
No, I'm just.
Is there a rubber band around?
Yeah, I don't like, just, yeah, like that.
All right.
Okay.
Get more?
We're done.
Excellent.
Check. You got a whole crowd here, what's going on?
Sixty-seven West Wilson Street. Sorry it's so late, I'm busy tonight. Good, how are you doing? Sorry, it was not exciting, just sitting in the back there, I'm sure.
You heard all the questions.
I was saying, you got, you got a couple going ahead of you, so.
Right, so you hear another two marijuana businesses and questions and things like that, so.
Yeah, so we're just here to face the preliminary to choose ourselves and just see, show you what we have. Show you what we've got so far.
Do you need the names?
Please, did you guys sign in as well?
I did not, I will.
You will have to, and I'll take the name now.
Uh, Neil Patel.
I know that one.
Heard that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not a will.
I'm sorry?
Not full boil. Thank you. So, um, I have some plans here.
Okay.
So we just wanna discuss what we have so far and then see what to do now forward. Okay, so my name is Not a Will, I'm a phase zero designer, private client, and I should wellness to assist in the special permit application. Uh, the intent is tonight is to just kinda introduce the project, introduce us, who we are, and prepare for our special permit application and site plan review application for meeting up July tenth. Um, we intend to provide the notice two weeks ahead of time and provide any documentation you need. Uh, we really wanna kind of get an idea of your concerns, additional needs that you might need. Of course, we plan on meeting all the ordinance requirements and special permit and site plan review application requirements. We don't plan on altering the site very much, it's, existing conditions are pretty good there. Uh, there is an existing freezer cooler on the back of the old Air Forum restaurant that is in the way of a secure Sally port, so we do intend to potentially remove that and replace it with a fenced area for secure delivery of products relating to facilities. You can go to the floor plan and get an idea, it doesn't change too much from the existing, I'm sure if you've been in, you kinda recognize the layout. The intent, and it's our understanding that we are moving forward with a retail, marijuana, adult use, uh, no medical, uh, and a potential extraction area and kind of a show kitchen for just basic edibles in the future.
To not growing, but to process.
And they, they do intend on having a cultivation facility within the town as well, that they will get most of their product from.
Correct, but not here.
Correct, no.
Do they allow this big sign?
No, we actually, we put that on the rendering and then we're looking at the signage permits and it's too large, so we will change that, and it'll just be an updated canopy as similar to what's there now.
So where's the, where's the existing, is this West Wilson Street in the front?
Uh, so the, the site plan.
It's here?
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the front entrance.
I'm looking at there, I'm looking at there, the existing entrance.
The existing entrance is on the West Wilson side?
Yeah, so there's, there's two vestibules.
Here, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
That'll be the primary entrance, we are going to rework that to make it more accessible, wanna make sure that we're meeting codes, this is a change of use from our restaurant to a hospitality to a, to a retail. Uh, so we will make sure that we do that, we also most likely have to change most of the doors just for secure access control and all that, so.
Who owns the building?
Marino is his last name.
Okay.
Yeah, him and his brother own it.
And they're, do you, do you?
They own a mall.
Do you need to do the changes or?
We have a lease with them, um, they're comfortable with us changing, we can make the changes that we need to do.
What do we have to do to make sure that we, that that is okay with us? Because we have to give the permit to kind of both of them?
Um, is the owner of the property involved?
Yeah, we just need a signature of the owner authorizing you guys to act and to make changes and represent that this stuff is gonna actually get done.
You should buy it.
I don't think it's going to sell at the moment. So the, the exterior is, is going to remain mostly as it is, apparently some doors may change.
So the back is changing?
The back is changing, so there's, was an existing cooler freezer, and I think you can, you can see that on the existing site plan, the bump out in the back, I think it's about ten feet by thirty-five feet-ish. It was an addition on the back of the existing building, beginning with existing blocks, uh, of freezer kind of inside. So right now, the parking is technically shared, I believe, there's no designated parking. Uh, the client has been in talks with the police chief to ensure that parking will not be a concern and traffic will not be a concern. Um, and we're also looking to engage with the town with a traffic mitigation plan that is kind of a living mitigation plan that can be adjusted as things evolve.
So the parking is only in this lot or do you have any other?
So the, the intent is to potentially secure off-site employee parking, that will then be shuttled to the site, so it will only be custom parking that will be required onsite. And we feel that there are enough parking spaces adjacent to the building that it won't be a concern.
How many employees you think will be there at any one time?
Fifteen at max.
Okay, okay.
Do we have the old, um, uses and parking strategy from the original project?
Uh, that's what they have to submit to us for, in your traffic, in your parking layout, you've calculated all the parking that's required based on these.
Yes.
All the storage of the, you, um, post office trucks, that kind of thing. And I don't know if there's any supposed to be parked in the back, so the numbers that are in the back are gonna need to be taken into account in the front.
Sure.
So as long as you can run those numbers and show that in the application.
And jet parking, I think there's a timely consideration, because like, one's a restaurant that was not at the same time as the post office.
Correct, so that's something that we have discussed with the police chief, uh, just due to the nature of the business, it's likely that most of the retail transactions will happen after five P M. So that it'll be relatively similar to the restaurant use in terms of traffic time.
What would your hours be?
Uh, most likely at ten to eight.
Okay, the, the mass.
Yeah.
Eight o'clock somewhere.
Eight o'clock.
Eighteen. Okay.
Right, so if you're operating from ten to eight, then there is gonna be a conflict.
Right.
So you're gonna need to account for all the parking spaces.
So what about that day, I think, you know, you pay your own but currently, so they, you are planning on using the upper parking lot.
So after, yeah, so after talking with the police chief, he thinks it won't be necessary, by the time we will be open, he doesn't feel that the demand is gonna be as crazy as they've seen in Leicester and Northampton. Um, and he thinks that it's just, if we need for, just for employees, we can off-site parking for them, what we have right now would be good enough for.
How many, how many? How many, how many parkings you use to make for your purpose?
Sorry?
How many, how many parkings for your use?
For our use?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's all shared, so there's no designated parking.
Yeah, but if you take up all this shared weight, if you take up all the parking for the, this purpose, what about the other people, how they are going to park, that would be a question.
Sure.
The parking study, you have, how much is that for you?
Right, that's, that's, exactly, so we'll have to do the calculations to make sure there's enough parking for all the uses in the, the other building as well as our building. So that, that will be provided as part of our submission. Um, it's also our intent to, to, like I said, with the traffic mitigation plan to work with the town if, if there is a traffic issue that occurs.
Right, it would be a traffic issue.
Right.
We're both as honest as we can be.
But we want, we would want to have that as part of the site plan review, so the traffic mitigation plan after, if we see a problem.
And I, actually, at one of the earlier meetings, we were discussing with them, even, even after your approval, come back in in like forty-five days and we'll discuss what's going on with traffic and what's went on with parking. And maybe we'll make some changes at that point based on whatever's going on.
Exactly.
We had to think, we're just starting out with them, but it seems like a good strategy.
Sure, I've, I've done similar on the dispensaries, so it's something we have experience with, we're more than comfortable to accommodate.
Well, do you know how many parking spaces there are total in this lot?
No, at the top of my head I don't know, so we primarily focus on the parking spaces that are immediately adjacent to our building.
Mm-hmm.
From site visits that I've gone to, site visits that the client has gone to, those parking spaces are very rarely utilized, I don't think, so I don't park.
But you have to get to the store, it's not that much, it's not really a missing.
There's nothing here. Yeah, exactly, so we do.
And also, also, you know, when you open up the store, everyone is coming in, if, if there is a lot of crowd, there will be parking everywhere.
Sure. Correct, but it's true, so by, it is a retail location by, by zoning, so it's setting three hundred, uh, square feet of retail per parking space in West Boylston?
Two, three, three, I think.
Two fifteen, so we're at about three thousand square feet for the entire building, so, you know, by, by code is up to all parking spaces. We have seventeen immediately adjacent, so we feel that once we run the counts for all of the buildings, we will have more than our parking.
But considering a marijuana business, you may get more parking, so you can have a lot of parking.
Exactly, so that, that is why we want to enter with a traffic mitigation plan to, to, you know, soften that, that.
So we don't want that, uh, less of things.
Exactly, yeah.
So what we required of the folks that came in tonight was that they compare their traffic study to Fall River's actual, um, so that's what we probably want. The same thing here, Fall River has experience doing it, it's kind of, they had the Mad Dash and now it's slowed down.
Sure.
So they have some real numbers, so that's what we're calling those same numbers, even though our zoning says fifteen or whatever it might be. If they come up with twenty-six, that's what we'd be looking for.
Sure.
And, and it, and also along with all the ones that are in existing.
And also there is one of the, you know, the, the, the parking office, the queuing.
Traffic queuing, sorry?
Yeah, traffic queuing, because good, well, it's notorious, starting from, uh, here, this will leave, and post office complex, they will have, all this, uh, traffic conditions, uh, whether it's getting in, getting out.
Southbound turns and they're tough, coming up.
Much more traffic than maybe a little, oh, yeah, but, yeah, something like that.
Has the, the town, from the traffic studies on the, on your road?
On your twelve?
Yeah.
Central Mass Regional Planning has done some work on counts, but no formal studies been done.
Counts, counts on the center of town, most of, most of the town. Well, just, well, just adjacent.
Three hundred yards.
Yeah. Franklin, Franklin Street and beyond the center of town, they have, they have.
Franklin Road was at one fourteen at the time.
Right, so Franklin Street, which is on the other side of the Watch Use at Liquors, which is just north of you, that's the most accidents in town. So that's indicating what's going on with the crosswind flow. And that's mostly because they're trying to cut across because there's not a lot of openings. Same thing would be happening when you guys are leaving, trying to make a southbound.
And the one problem is that we told, Watch Use, when they put it, we said no one left turn out of there, exit onto.
Franklin Street, that's right.
No, onto, we walked.
Onto twelve, and also onto Franklin.
I think it only take a right.
Oh, yeah.
Can go there anywhere.
Yeah, you, yeah, cause you, it's that, it's the one that goes out on the Franklin Street, you can't go left on Franklin Street, you have to go right. I'm, I'm sure, but that's, that's what the signage says.
I thought they were allowed to go left onto the other one, cause then they were probably some traffic.
You can.
Three hundred or thirty feet from the other intersection.
Yeah, you can.
No, you can take a judge, yeah?
Yep.
There was no cut-throughs as well.
Yeah, no, there was no cut-throughs.
You see people turning left from the parking lot onto Franklin?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm sure, I was gonna say, I'm sure you do.
Correct.
Yeah.
I haven't seen from the.
It is right, you know, there's a little, there's a little break at the bottom.
No, I don't mean you, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So we have that, um, traffic plan.
Yeah, I, I think the traffic's gonna be here.
What's the condition of the asphalt there, if I remember right, there's some pockets that are pretty messy.
Towards the rear of the building, it looks a little rough, I think there's a lot of, uh, high volume, uh, traffic from trucks that went right there to, to kind of circle around, there's also the dumpster back there. Truck just going through there. So since we are modifying the Sallyport delivery area, we'll go have some asphalt work and we can look to repair any, it just. I wonder how they agreed to do some resurfacing?
Okay.
That's good, cause as, as I recall, now you are making me remember going, going there to pick up some food or something and having a difficult time finding a spot that was not a giant puddle.
Well, yeah.
Uh, there's one, yeah, there's, spinning water on that one.
Come to think of it, yeah, yeah, I'd, completely forgotten about that.
You know, it used to be a.
Yeah, so you can see the driving vehicles.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Standard footprint, so.
Yeah, so.
And that came in, was, did we permit that? I'm not sure that we permitted that.
I don't see it for it.
Well, I was, I went to that and called it a nice one. So it wasn't me permitting.
That must have been.
It must have been.
Must have been, right.
Yeah. Okay. I think, I think each site is different, I think the site, this site, parking and traffic will be more of a concern than.
Yeah.
What about lighting, lighting?
One eleven Chippewa Street, because they're away from the center of town. And they have.
But they're gonna have their own traffic problems.
Yeah, it'd just be different.
They're, they have high-speed traffic problems, we have low, direct problems here.
So is it gonna be lighting on your site? I mean, we have a requirement that you can't have more than half a tangle, quick tangle, um, at the property lines. So we'd be looking for some kind of a plan showing that whatever you're proposing is gonna do that, anti-clear, down lighting, all that, all these standard things.
No, I'm not sure.
Exactly.
Well, there must be existing lighting in the parking lot.
There is.
So does that have to?
It has to be upgraded.
Does it? It does, is that true?
Yes.
And it stays the way it is?
Yeah, cause they're proposing a, a use here.
Well, didn't Neil Forno have to do the same thing when they came in?
That's why I don't think there should be much.
Right. That wasn't that long ago, Neil Forno was, uh, what, five years ago?
They have to upgrade all of the lights through the whole parking?
No, their section, their area.
Yeah, alright, just whatever you have.
What about the, the storage, is it, uh, dumpster?
So there's an existing dumpster tucked by the trees in the site plan that we utilize. Typically, these facilities have very little waste, you know, all the waste that is produced.
Yeah, but you do have an extraction and packaging, right?
Correct.
So that means, uh, what, what are you going to do with that waste?
Sure, so typically, one, uh, deliveries are made with products, the waste is taken with delivery that leaves, so it's, it's all.
So the, that dumpster is only because they're, they're left fresh, so.
Right, and it'll be very minimal.
Mm-hmm, okay.
In which way are they accessing that dumpster? It looks like it's going against traffic flow.
I, I honestly couldn't tell you how that's currently served, uh, we can look into that.
Actually, maybe a front loader, that's probably the.
Twice, yeah.
Interesting, you mentioned traffic flow, because there's not really any natural flow around here, it's sort of a chaos kind of flow.
Well, the scare is that between the two buildings, that's, that gets to be a little dicey as people are coming around from the back of.
Sure.
What's in the back?
Well, the post office stores their trucks, the little trucks back there.
There's no public parking back there.
Well, there's not supposed to be any parking back there.
I thought that's where they're supposed to keep their trucks.
I didn't think so, not on the original.
I thought, I thought the signs are saying, you're not, we're not supposed to go back there.
Right, but there, there's supposed to be a fire lane all the way around the building?
Cause I never seen post office trucks in front.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, truthfully, I find the parking here in general.
Do you know about one, do you know about one of the residents complained about the cut-through?
The walking stuff? Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good thing, we had comments of kids and folks, there's a development here, uh, condos right behind you. We'd want to have some kind of a fencing to kind of limit the access, the cut, the cut through access.
Behind that, you have that, that building, that, you have the, the post office building that side.
Yeah, on the southeast side.
If it comes to.
Well, it's not, it's not so much the people at the condo complex, there's people that live up on Worcester Street, so they'll cut through the condo complex and they'll walk down next to the pool, and then down the road, it's the condo complex, and then out to Worcester Street. So we wanna try to limit any pedestrian access that way. And then.
So the, the dumpster will be fenced, right?
Yes, it'll be, I think it's currently a full vinyl, um, privacy fence, but if it's not, we're gonna get in.
And so most of these walls are staying the same?
Mostly, yes, uh, there will be some changes in that show, all that, and then the final permit application.
What's the drainage on that new Sallyport doing?
Uh, we don't know yet, we'll take a look at that and make sure that it drains, uh.
Where's the drainage from the rest of the building?
There's existing, uh, sewer, I believe, somewhere, but we'll take a look at that and make sure that that's shown.
Sewer storm?
Uh, stormwater.
Okay.
It all goes down. It's sewer, yeah?
Yeah, it all goes to the, to the north side.
Oh, so, like, go through this place?
Right through the parking lot, you can almost follow the divots in the pavement.
Yeah.
Some of the north is over here, so it drains that way, and there's, there's stormwater.
Oh, I, I was wondering if the sewer, sewer connects to Route twelve?
Sewer connection is auto onto Route twelve, yeah, I'm pretty sure it is, yeah, I think it comes right down.
Could run around the corner, there's like a, a pump station down on, uh, one four.
Oh, does it go out the back? No.
Is there anything close to that one?
Yeah, there's a big wetland there, so I don't think it goes through, uh, east of the site is all wetland. Or a lot of wetland.
So from the other business to this one, they do extraction and packaging, so do we need to worry about the smell?
That was the, next thing, the smell and the, the odor control, is there any issues with that?
We have, uh, we have an established relationship with a great mechanical engineer that we are looking to, through SWAC's.
Well, like neighbors, I mean, all those, you can, we get on pictures showing.
Most exposed to.
But it's, it's very small processing, so it's not, not a big growing.
But it is a big concern of residents in town. So given that the sign, the sign will not be on the roof then, so you have a different, different sign somewhere?
Correct, there's a, I believe there's an existing sign board, uh, immediately here.
Oh, yes, okay.
There's actually an existing one that shouldn't be there, like, near the park, yeah, but I get some.
Oh, right, the Il Forno signs in violation of zoning, so that.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah, that's on your list.
It is?
I'm pretty sure, well, maybe.
Uh, I don't think it was, uh, it's on, it's on Vinnie's list.
No, but not, you put the sign on the building, right?
Building lot, sure.
But there is an Il Forno, yeah.
So it's probably existing one?
That's not in, in the.
That's, you got one standing sign.
And they have two?
They get the Il Forno and they get the one in the island. There's one here.
Oh, there is?
And then there's the other one here, so they have two standing signs. I thought there was one in the island.
Doesn't the island just say, doesn't the island just say the plug?
Yeah, it says West Boylston.
This is the plug.
Is it?
It's just, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But we'll, we'll ensure that the sign is.
Okay. Okay.
That odor, I think, might be, well, I'm sure it's gonna be a big question.
Sure.
Lighting and odor.
Yeah, we just need to have good answers for people when they ask questions. You need to be specific about what, what you're doing with that.
Were you here earlier when we talked about the sniffer, whatever the tool is to use?
Yeah.
Would you buy us one if that guy won?
Well, it may be a combination deal.
Everybody put in a little money for it, yeah.
Yeah, three of them, three companies coming in, you split it two ways. We only need one of them, I don't need three.
But again, it's for a minimal third location.
Actually, I'm actually very interested in that.
Okay, yeah.
Do, do we have another copy of that that we gave to Mallett, that little, that little brochure?
Do we get six of them or?
We didn't get six of them, we got four.
Okay, well, I only found two, so that's why I gave one away.
Yeah, there might be one in there.
So we could make a copy?
I thought there was two, uh, plans there.
Yes, I have, there are two, I got one and I gave one. I gave one to you and I gave one to Phil, isn't that in here?
Mine's on the way, right?
And you should still have, shouldn't you?
No. That's what we gave away.
No, maybe it's over here. It's in the paper. It's in the card. No.
No, it wouldn't have been in the, it's not my.
It's not as much a concern with the recall.
No, we've attached to that plan.
No.
You don't have much.
Contact the planning board.
I don't know.
Okay.
Go down, see if there's another one in there.
Well, I think things look pretty good.
Yeah.
I get, I mean, the idea's there, it's, it's gonna be tough traffic-wise, and it's gonna be concerns with, you know, and parking.
The email that went around about the ZVA, about change of use, does that not apply going from a restaurant to the recreational marijuana? I know that usually, you know, the change of use, like, when they, we did, when they did the project at B E R Hospital over on Century Drive, even though the, the parking lot, the building was in Worcester, the parking lot was in West Boylston, but they had come to the ZVA because it was a change of use. Now, does that change, is that a different aspect now, because this is gonna be a, you know, recreational marijuana, and because you folks are, they're so body?
That's a good question.
Yeah, somewhere it came up, you had a question about whether the zoning, whether you need to go to the zoning board, appeals and planning board.
There were two. And.
And I never heard anything back on that, cause I.
I think they have to go to the ZVA for the shared parking issue.
Usually it's, it's for the change of use.
It's a change of use on a non-conforming lot.
Right, so this is, this is according to the, the zoning regulations, it's by right with the, with special permit by you.
And I don't know if you.
Right.
So I, I believe that it's.
So I don't think they have to.
Okay, no, that, that's fine, that's good.
Right, yeah, cause that was the only thing that, I think I mentioned it with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, they were addressing it.
Does Nancy already call me that, I have to go to the ZVA?
Do you have a drive-through? You don't have a drive-through?
No, not a lot.
Cause a drive-through also requires ZVA, so that, there are like little things that require both, but not, we tried to, when we redid the site plan stuff, to.
If it wasn't a marijuana business and they're doing change of use, which, they didn't go to the ZVA?
Well, that's what I'm trying to app, that's what, to me, to me asking is because the project, um, the greenhouses, that's definitely a change of use. It was a manufacturing, you know, well, it was one thing and now it's a whole different, whole different aspect.
Ripple.
But I'm thinking because, because of you guys.
No, but what's the change of use trigger? What are you referring to when you say change of use means it has to go to the ZVA? Why?
Cause it goes from one business to another.
I know what a change of use is, but why, where does it say that?
Well, no, that's, it doesn't always have to, cause like recess didn't go to you.
Cause why, why, just that, not to make, get in that, why did the parking lot have to come to us? There was four hundred and ninety parking spots.
No, oh, because the use.
What?
The hospital.
The hospital over, uh, Saint Pierre's, because the, the use for, uh.
Different category?
Is that the, the mental health?
Yeah, it was a hospital clinic thing, and a hospital clinic requires a special permit from the ZVA, medical, no? Residential, that's not recreational.
I think, you know, you may have a, a lot of people who.
A medical clinic is a special permit from the ZVA, that's why.
Just because you have the.
So that's what it was going in as.
Not from the store.
So this is, but this is.
This is a retail.
Are you making all the edible stuff? So that's, that's a lot of smell.
Sure. Well, I'm sure that we have.
Is there a shared parking there?
I know, I'm just looking at the old bylaws.
Like I said, I know the, the email went around and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there was clarifications, there was no need for them to come through.
Right, it's all, planning board, site plan review. Everything marijuana is SPR.
That's to your point.
Yeah, that answers the question.
Somebody, a town board looks at it.
So nothing goes through as of yet?
I'm coming.
Yeah.
All right.
Somebody, any other questions?
Sharing the shared parking? Well, sharing the parking is only with us.
I don't know where I would find that, we would do that by a search, I don't remember what, what section shared parking was.
How did that work for Salter School? You were on the board when Salter School came in, that shit parking, right?
No, Salter School is why we got site plan review and landscaping of parking lots.
Uh, Rainy Garden?
It never happened, what do you mean? What about the Rainy Garden?
You asked.
You're just winding me up. Austin Street Parking.
Don't wind Vinnie up, it's ten thirty five.
That's right.
Again, see what section this is.
Construction maintenance, jurisdiction.
Austin Street Parking.
Some of us have babies who are parent crying.
And for your use, typically when I submit a special permission package, I'll print out or have a, a full review of the applicable order. This is how it's farmed to every line item.
Well, it's, yeah, well, it's trying to be in there, like, trying to quieten them.
If we share the parking, the Board of Appeals should hear and decide upon applications for special permits.
Page seventy? It's page seventy?
Yes, I got it, page sixty seven.
He says it's okay.
Right. So, Board of Appeals shall hear and decide upon applications for special permits for a reduction of the required number of parking spaces, but we're saying they need to comply, so they, they're not trying to reduce it.
Okay.
So they're allowed to reduce it up to twenty-five percent if it can be demonstrated that the uses are not, um, at different hours during the normal activity, which they're not, cause they're up, open from ten till whenever. Okay.
Okay, so they're not asking to reduce it, so maybe it's not.
So it doesn't, the shared parking is, we allow it, and this is a business center already, so.
Yeah, okay.
That's what a business center is, it has shared parking.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
See you then.
You guys have a good night.
Yep, thank you. But do we have questions from the peanut gallery there?
Who is it?
Four?
Four?
You're kidding.
Four to nothing.
Oh, I think you, it's over then.
Yeah.
That's too bad. Why?
So you brought the new shirt?
That's right. Did you sign in, ma'am?
Four to one.
I did, I took your attendance sheet, made everybody else sign it, because they all came for the meeting. I think they just slid in and I thought, you're, you're gonna sign.
Yeah.
There you go, thank you very much.
Thank you.
But these guys came in like, no, you signed it. Oh, I thought Chris got you guys.
Score's four one now, looking up.
Oh, I mean, good to, good to get on the board, yeah, just.
Make it look good.
How much time left? Two minutes? In the game? One forty. In the game?
Oh, well, it's gonna be quiet at the office tomorrow.
Yeah, for sure.
Before that, going to the college.
I, I don't really, everybody around me, like at the office and, not everybody, but a lot of people. My nanny, oh my gosh, she had Bruins earrings and a shirt on today, I was like.
Four to one.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do we have next, ENF report?
Good, good, yeah.
What?
ENF report.
Which does that mean?
Something, hey, you got it there, I only gave you a copy of it, that's, that's the thing I told you.
Yeah, environmental notification form, so that means some.
No, it's, keep going down, it's, it's. Find it, find her.
Save it for next time.
Yeah, it's late.
Off Temple Street. They're pleased to transmit here with the ENF, if you have reference site. Drinking water well easement over DCR watershed protection.
So it's town, they put in a town well. Near the DCR property, so they have to go to ENF. Not the deal.
No, just a copy, I just wanted to see.
We're all in favor.
Informational copy, yeah, all in favor.
Do you want to do something with this?
No.
We have to write comments if we want to, but I wouldn't worry about it, cause it's the town water district that is doing the work, I think.
Which state is this?
Cover to cover.
Oh, actually, it's, um, Mark's backyard, so.
Yeah, don't ask the DCR.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
What are we doing? This is a water, the well, you know, water well.
Proposed fenced enclosure.
New well?
Yeah.
New well?
Where?
Pine Hill.
Pine Hill.
No, Pine Hill.
Pine Hill.
Where's Pine Hill?
Your backyard.
It's called Pine Hill?
Yeah. All the pine in there? All the pines in there?
They said they have to.
Well, it's mine would drive, I didn't know there was a.
They said they have to, uh, demolish the Frieden residence.
Awesome. Did I get market rate, right?
Yeah.
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably what it is. I just filled up my car with gas. I just filled the tank with oil, does that help?
Okay, so this is just FYI then?
Let Mark look at it and keep him busy for a little while.
We'll go on to the next item then. Got it, sign registry of deeds form, updating planning board members.
You can sign that if you get a significant.
Except we have the same members.
You can.
We still have to sign?
Yes, every year, but it's, it's in there, you can do it when you go through your signing.
Raj, how many votes did you get, Raj?
Six, six.
Six?
Six hundred and sixty.
Oh. Planning, uh-oh.
Seven hundred and twenty-five something.
All right, okay. Did you get more for planning board then?
Yeah, more for planning board.
There's no one to run against.
Yeah, but you, you know, they don't have a board. But if there's nothing else there, you know, it's just all in circles at that point.
Do we have multiple?
There's one to sign the registry of deeds and, and then sign for authorized signatures form for the fiscal.
Can I put this down?
No, can we use this thing?
We already turned it down.
Oh, I, that's for the accountant, they probably won't take it.
I was saying, I think they should probably sign for real.
I'm gonna say no.
Yeah, oh my gosh. We're not gonna be able to say, we sit up late watching the Bruins, man.
Just put your names, whatever, don't worry about the dates of the thing.
Just sign it. Why are there two sections here?
Cause they're two separate things.
On here? On this?
Read them now, yeah, top and bottom. If you read the instructions or receipts, if you prefer. We do it over here.
Lock her eyes for approval not required.
Yeah.
Is that?
Read the paper underneath it.
The number of planning board members.
Read what's attached. You'll better understand it.
I would like to remind your planning boards in order to keep our registry staff up to date. Kindly provide a list of your current planning board members, including signatures and appointment and expiration dates. Please note regarding A and R plans, it is imperative you complete the section in the middle of the form. It will be majority of the above signatures, oh, if it will be majority of the above signatures, please specify such in this section. If only one or two signatures are required, but only certain board members, please specify which members along with the number of signatures required. We don't have any special members for A and R plans, so.
Number of signatures required for an A and R, three.
Right, but it says if only one or two signatures are required, but only certain board members, please specify which members, we don't have that.
Just say anyone.
This office can make no assumptions. As you know, all of the Worcester District cities and towns have different rules and procedures. Failure to provide this completed form and updated information will result in our office rejecting plans due to missing information. Okay, so this is.
I will fill in the dates of the.
Serious business.
Yeah, don't sign it.
So if we have no special requirements.
She knows, she'll fill that in.
Got it.
Okay. I complained.
Yeah.
So we have to specify a majority of the above signatures in this section.
Just sign it.
So three are required, so three of the people above, none special. So all you have to.
Everybody's special.
Yeah, maybe we're all special.
Some of us are more special than others.
You got to, you're a man.
I'll print your names afterwards, just sign it.
Oh, have I got stories about my other boards?
Yeah, I don't think so, I think our time is running out.
Yeah.
Our time is running out.
Boards, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think we gotta get kicked out of this room anyway by a certain time, we had ten forty, ten fifty, we gotta be out of here.
Oh, there we go, alarms are gonna go off, I mean, we, it's, it's a, it's a requirement. I think it's, I think it's a zoning bylaw. Yeah. I think there's a point of diminishing returns when you get too tired.